It's ten o'clock and time for the council meeting session. We have Mr. Pacheco, Ms. Misakowski, Mr. Ridley Thomas. We have five members present and five members from. Council will please come to orders. All the roll.
For instance, Chief Figueroa Hernandez Hernandez Holden Misakowski Pacheco Padilla Ridley Thomas Swanish Wax Walters Ferraro, ten members present in the court, Mr. President.
Okay, let me point out that this is a meeting of the city council for the city of Los Angeles on the twelfth day of April, the year two thousand. There are fifteen council districts in the city. The regular meeting days are Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays. We are currently being viewed by cable subscribers throughout the Los Angeles area on Channel thirty-five, and we're also being monitored by council phone. First order of business.
Approval of the minutes.
Our Mr. Pacheco moves, Mr. Padilla second. There's no objections, unanimous vote. The next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
There's no objections, unanimous vote. Next item.
Before beginning the regular agenda, Mr. President, there are several items to continue. Item number one, the applicant consents to a continuance to June seventh.
If there's no objections, that will be the order.
Item number seventeen, council member Walters requests that be continued to Friday, April fourteenth.
There's no objections, unanimous vote.
And items forty A and B, the city attorney has advised that those items should be received and filed.
If there's no objections, unanimous vote on that, forty A and B.
Yes, Mr. President.
Okay. President, on items twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six, which are all in my district, I was gonna ask for a three-week continuance.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four.
Twenty-five and twenty-six. They're all repeat items in my district for three-week continuance.
Twenty-two, twenty-three, twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-six.
Right.
Mr. Hernandez wants those continued three weeks. That would be May third. If there's no objections, that will be the order. Next item.
Items for which, excuse me, items noticed for public hearing, item number two, three, and four, all have ordinances on them. Do you wish to hold those on the desk?
We'll hold, we'll hold all three of them until. The next item.
Item number five is required public hearing item. I believe there are cards on the item.
Yeah, let me point out that. The city attorney has advised us that we cannot go forward with the revocation. In the plum committee, we were asked the committee to support revocation. The city attorney has advised us that we can't go have, go forward with the revocation. In the plum committee, we asked the committee to support the revocation. They agreed based on their police testimony. However, after the committee and the city attorney reviewed the police records and advised that the evidence was contradictory, they are submitting a motion which will be five A to grant the appeal of the motel owner and keep the condition of the BZA decision in the letter. Because of the contrary, plum commit is requires ten votes to pass, so I would ask that we adopt the motion five A and move ahead. In the meantime, there are some people who want to be heard. I would ask those who are just in, in favor of the revocation to be, Harriet Dil- Dilford.
Mr. President, before we move on to agenda items, I was gonna request thirty-two and thirty-seven go to committee.
Thirty, thirty-two and thirty.
As a matter of fact, thirty-two is already on today's committee agenda, but it shouldn't have been here prematurely.
Thirty-two and which one?
Thirty-seven.
If there's no objections, that will be the order. Harriet Dilford, did you want to be heard?
We've already granted what she wants. We granted the appeal.
Pull the microphone up closer to your mouth.
I've heard, and I'm very pleased that, that you granted the appeal. As you know, that, my name is Harriet Dilford. I'm an attorney, and I've practiced law in the San Fernando Valley now for twenty years. I'm also here to support the Community Coalition for Police Accountability, but I do want to emphasize, I don't represent Mr. Vaquashi. I'm here on my own behalf. I'm very familiar with this nuisance case, and matter of fact, all of the nuisance cases that have come before you. My law firm, along with Mr. De Corsi, who does represent the appellant, and I believe one other attorney represents Blama, the Greater Los Angeles Hotel Motel Association, which is made up of about a thousand mostly Asian-American small-business owners. And as most of you know, for the last six years, I have probably appeared before you in the police commission dozens of times to convey instances of police misconduct, false arrest, and harassment. Many, after, after a lot of time and frustration, this has finally resulted with, in the police commission coming out with directives in nineteen ninety-six, and then again in nineteen ninety-nine, and Chief Parks came out with a special order number eleven, where the police department has been ordered to follow certain requirements. They can't do what they did in this case and three other cases last month. I filed complaints with the police commission. They can't submit PACMS reports or radio calls or testify without backup documentation to support what they're saying. They have to show a nexus. I know you don't want to hear this, but there's cases that come before you all the time, and there's other cases that are going to be coming before you, and I hope that the city attorney gets actively involved now, the planning department city attorney, not just the city, why nuisance abatement program attorneys.
Okay.
I just, I just ask from now on, when you hear these cases, you look carefully at the evidence and go with common sense and your conscience, and again, I thank you for granting this appeal.
Okay, thank you. We have other people who have cards here. Do you want to be heard? Your name?
Council John De Corsi, representing appellant. I'd like to thank the board and the city attorney for finally taking a hard look at true evidence and the true facts in these cases and for coming to a just decision.
Thank you. Warner Ratsinger, Maria Flores, we'll make them all part of the file. Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, members of the council, I just wanted to make a statement in regards to this item, and I understand the position that council member Ferraro is in regards to a project in his district, but I think that the city attorney's office has the responsibility to basically inform the committee when we're reviewing these items. This was a nuisance abatement action that started years ago, and we were reviewing it at the time based on violations, and we decided because of a new owner that we would continue it. And again, the police department came back and gave us a report, and because of the initial actions and because of the process and the length of time nuisance abatement takes, the committee made a recommendation, and we did not feel that everything was being resolved to the, to the satisfaction of the community. And I'm just surprised to hear today the amending motion and the fact that we have to grant the appeal when, in fact, the city attorney participated in that process with the committee for several continuances and did not go through that analysis till after the committee made a decision. And I would appreciate that kind of recommendation prior to us making a, a decision so that we could look at that information as part of our decision-making basis. And I just was surprised to hear the motion before us today because I know that when we were going through this process, it was a lengthy process, and we granted extensions, and the city attorney wasn't telling us this at that time.
Ms. Misakowski?
Thank you, Mr. President. As a member of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee who helped listen to this, I think what we're doing today is, is appropriate given what the city attorney's guidance has been. But members of the council, this is very much like we, what we see in other nuisance abatement or revocation cases. And in this case, there's no question that we do have a new owner and that there had been some improvement. But in the judgment of the Planning and Land Use Management Committee, as presented by some of the applicant, some of the residents in the area, as well as the police department, there was still some question as to whether or not some of the conditions were still not being met. I think what the city attorney has said is that, given their advice, that information was not adequate to justify revocation. However, I do want to underscore, and I think the president in his district this is located, has also indicated that in no way does this relieve the current owner from maintaining every one of the conditions up to what the zoning administrator has required, which will require a revisiting of this site within a next, the next period of time, and to see whether or not there can be absolute certainty. And I think the, the best thing that I can do to recommend to the hotel owner and operator is particularly to maintain a good relationship with the LAPD, because the LAPD's testimony in terms of the number of radio calls, the number of issues that were involved at this particular location, granted, it's in an area that has some troubling problems, but I think for the owner of the hotel to work with the LAPD so that those calls are done on a friendly basis, are not meant to be calls against the operator, will be the kind of information that I think we will be looking to, both the zoning administrator, the BZA, and the Planning and Land Use Committee, as well as, I think, the, the president, in terms of future review. So with that, I am happy to support the recommendation of Mr. Ferraro, but at least forewarn the applicant that we'd like to see continued progress in terms of improving the condition, improving the quality of that particular property, and make it not the nuisance and problem in the neighborhood.
Okay, we have five A, five A before us. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Now, do we have to vote on, okay, we have five as amended. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
That is approved. Let's go, let's go back to two and three and four.
Yeah, I was gonna continue number four for a week so the staff can leave if they wanted to.
Is there any objection to continuing four for a week? Seeing none, that will be the order. Four is continued one week, and the ordinance is not presented. Okay, now, item number two, we have Julie Butcher wants to be heard.
On seven, is that correct?
Item.
Okay.
Item two. Did you say you wanted to speak on two?
No, seven, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yeah. Yeah, well, it's funny writing. Okay, any discussion on two or three? Any discussion on two or three? If not, prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Thirteen ayes.
Those are approved. Members of the council, Cheryl, are they here? Are they here? Members of council, we have a distinguished group, delegation visiting Los Angeles from the National People's Congress of China, and we're honored to welcome the congress members to Los Angeles. We are proud of the strong relationship we share with China. For nearly twenty years, we have shared friendship and goodwill with the peoples of Guangzhou as our sister city and one of our important trading partners. Let's give a warm welcome to the delegation. The delegation is headed by the Honorable Chairman Chiang Shu Chang. Mr. Chang, would you, you and your delegation please stand, and would you be kind enough to take your microphone and say a few words?
Your honorable Mr. President Ferraro and your distinguished members of the city council. Thank you for arranging this meeting between us. Thank you for taking time out of your busy schedule. We have stayed in Los Angeles for three days. It is a very pleasant stay. We are deeply impressed by the hospitality of your people and the prosperity of your city. We know that Los Angeles is a sister city of Guangzhou. And the two cities have more and more exchanges. And I think the friendship between the two cities is a very big, good symbol. Because Guangzhou is one of those cities which opened to the outside world very early, and in the past twenty years, Guangzhou has undergone tremendous changes. And Los Angeles is the second largest city in the United States, and it is the economic center of the west of US. Should we understand that the friendship between the two cities is a symbol of the friendship between the two countries? China attaches great importance to the role and position of Los Angeles. During their visits by Mr. President Jiang and Premier Zhou to the United States, they all, they both visited Los Angeles. May I extend my thanks to all American friends who have made contribution to the friendship between China and the United States. I should tell you that the democracy in China is developing step by step as the economy of China. Due to our great efforts during the past twenty years, we have basically established the legal system of China. With the development of this process, and people are having stronger sense of law. I shouldn't say that the economy of China, the democracy, the legal system of China are perfect. We still have many problems. I should say that China still has a lot of problems to be solved, waiting to be solved. However, China is going up day by day. And I hope that the members of your city council may have an opportunity to visit China. Let Americans know more about China and let Chinese people know more about America. And surely you will receive friendly reception and hospitality from Chinese people. And you will have the real Chinese food in China. I think the food there must be much better than the Chinese food in Los Angeles. Thank you, and I hope my, my talk doesn't affect your work. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you very much. We're honored to have you in our city. The next item.
Mr. President, item number twenty-one, the council district one is also.
Items for which public hearings have been held, items six through 10, items nine and 10, both have multiple reports on the file. Those should be called special.
Yeah, seven should be called special, too.
Eight special.
Eight is called special. Which one? Yeah, okay, we have item number six. Anybody that want to call that special?
Did item one hit?
If not, prepare the roll on item number six. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Fourth with...
Fourth with on item six. Next item.
Items for which public hearings have not been held, items 11 through 39.
With those, we continue till... Anybody want to be heard on any of those items? We have no cards. Anybody want to be heard on 11 through 39?
27.
Wait, wait...
Sorry.
Okay, the public hearing is closed. Item 27, you want to...
Just federal amendment.
Okay.
Mr. President...
Any other specials?
Item number 11 is a bid opening... The bids were opened this morning in the CAO's office, and the CAO has prepared a resolution for council to adopt to award the bid to Fidelity Capital, and in the aggregate principal amount of $25 million, with a true interest cost of 4.618639 percent.
Okay, that motion has been presented. Mr. Ferraro moves on that. Any discussion? We're talking about item number 11. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay. Fourth with on that. Item 27, we're calling that special. Any other specials? Any other specials? So we have 12 through 39, with the exception of 17, 21 through 26, 27, 32, and 37, and 31.
About 32 is continued.
It's continued, yes. That's why I'm saying, we are approving those with, except those, because they've already been...
We keep those...
Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Those are approved.
Item 40 and 41 are closed session items. Item 42 is on the continuation agenda, and it's an item for which public hearing has been held.
All right, is there any discussion on 42? Item 42? We have a new ordinance on that. Prepare the roll.
It includes the amendments we discussed yesterday?
Yes.
I redrafted the ordinance. I've included the amendment, and... But I should let the council know that the amendment changes the Board of Taxi Cab Commissioners and the Board of Transportation Commissioners.
Okay.
To two-thirds.
Okay, prepare the roll.
Is it all done?
Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
That is approved. Fourth with on that one.
Best vote I've taken since I've been here.
Next item.
Item number seven called special.
Okay.
Thank you.
Item seven. Julie Butcher?
No, I'm sorry. Oh, no, excuse me. It's only Julie, that's right. Thank you very much. Representing Local 347, for 12 years, I have stood somewhere near the same spot and urged the city of Los Angeles to take seriously its obligations to provide a safe place for the workers and people of Los Angeles. For 12 years, I've watched the expenditure of funds for workers' compensation claims and benefits, expenditures for liabilities of all varieties on the part of the city as they skyrocketed. For seven years, I've stood somewhere close to this spot and advocated for keeping hiring, augmenting, or simply not getting rid of safety staff. And in every, each and every budget prepared and presented by the current administration, we've seen just that. Cuts, reductions. For seven years, that staffing has been cut, moved, attrited, or simply not hired. Finally, last week, amazingly enough, 27 very specific action items were brought before you and approved. 27 items agreed upon by a broad and representative joint labor management committee, which has been working to address very serious problems we face in this area. Now finally, we're ready to move forward on 27 action items to make the city safe. To move this entire effort wholesale to a new department, one that doesn't exist today, seems foolhardy. On behalf of the labor management safety effort, the labor side of that effort, it is just beginning to take hold in the city, and we'd urge you to consolidate risk management with the worker's safety, but that you not move it to a new department. The voters of Los Angeles did not vote for this manner of centralization. It was, in fact, one of the outstanding concerns voiced again and again, urging and maintaining an adequate process of balance and check. We urge that the access to that information be kept, accessible for, in its largest extent. For Local 347, in our role in advocating for worker's safety, we'd urge you not to take the risk of moving risk management and worker's safety anyplace at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, Julie Butcher. We've... I've introduced motion 7A, so 7A is on the desk, too. Mrs. Chick?
Yes, I'd like to hold my time and ask for our CAO and CLA, Mr. Fujioka and Mr. Deaton, to come to the table to make their comments. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Bill Fujioka, I have several comments to make. This is with respect to the proposal to move risk management to the Office of Finance. The one thing I want to emphasize is that risk management, retaining risk management in the city administrative office, and then in the future Office of Administration and Research, makes functional sense. This is not a turf war. This is not an attempt to just keep something in the office without a business reason. It makes absolute functional sense. I sent some information to your respective offices yesterday that describes the duties and responsibilities of risk management, and how they relate, directly relate, to the core functions in the CAO, and then after July 1st, ORS. And that includes working with our staff, our budget staff and finance staff, to identify revenue options such as insurance, self-insurance, reinsurance, dedicated loss reserve accounts, and how we would use this in a combination of cash and debt to pay for our major city programs. They also work with the mayor and consul on effective ways to budget for liability exposures and disaster losses. They work with mayor and consul on recommending techniques for loss prevention and risk reduction. In each instance, I want to emphasize the point that they work with the mayor and consul. That is critical. In a letter from the mayor and the city controller to your consul, it states that it's important, I think one of the principal points, is the need to move it to the department that reports only to the mayor to increase accountability. I think that is, at best, a specious argument. Because every single manager, every single general manager in the city has a mandate now to have a strong and effective risk management program. That mandate was approved by this consul and the mayor. To say that they will not follow that mandate because this program will stay in the CAO or Office of Administration and Research and so on is, I think, at best absurd. The other thing I want to emphasize is, in the same letter to your consul, it states that if this function is put in the Office of Finance, the director will be expected to put this responsibility at the top of his or her agenda. Well, the charter clearly states that his principal function, if not sole function, as voted by the... Our citizens, is to collect revenue. So if, in fact, he's expected to put this at the top of his agenda, he'll be focusing on a function that is not described or listed in the charter, and instead placing his charter-mandated responsibilities as a lower priority. That in itself is critical. The other thing I want you to understand, or factor into your decision today, is that the city is in the process of recruiting a director for the Office of Finance. If, in fact, this person's instructed to place risk management, well, it's transferred and instructed to place risk management at the top of his agenda, will the city then recruit someone who has a risk management background? No. The focus should be on recruiting someone who has significant experience in revenue collection. I think we all know that we need improvement in that particular area, especially for business taxes. And we should find someone who has that experience, and we should ask the Office of Finance to focus their activities, their... All their effort on improving our revenue collection next year. That's my comment.
Point of order.
Appoint me.
On item number six, which I did not...
We don't have six before us right now.
I'm going to change my vote, and I think it's proper for me to do it now. I want to change my vote from item no...
You're not recognized. We're going to continue this, Mr. Holden.
Then you just make sure you recognize me before you send it forthwith.
I'll recognize you, because you're harder not to recognize. Okay, all right. Mr. Fujioka, are you finished?
Yes, sir.
All right, Mr. Deaton?
Okay. Mr. President, members of the council, first off, the proposed ordinance is completely consistent with the proposed charter effective July 1st, 2000. The Office of Finance under the charter has two responsibilities. One is the treasurer, and the second is tax collection. And the council can buy ordinance, transfer functions to that department or that office if it so chooses. This ordinance, however, continues the functions that are now currently in the city administrative office, which, under the new charter, has to be done by ordinance. And so this ordinance retains those functions in the CAO's office. The significant difference between the Office of Finance and the city administrat... The new Office or ORS, as it's now called, is the reporting relationships, as I stated in the last time we considered this. And that relationship is, for ORS, is that it reports both to the mayor and the council. And in the case of the Office of Finance, it reports only to the mayor. Finally, the... If we did not... If the ordinance is not passed, then by directive, the council has not added this function to the city administrative office or the ORS, the new ORS function, and it would have to then go to another department, i.e. Office of Finance. I think at this point, at this juncture, is inappropriate to do that, to send this function to an organization, one that has not been created. It will not be created July 1st. There is no general manager. It is, at minimum, the idea of risk management is premature for that transfer. It should be considered at a later date, once there's an outgoing organization in place, and that individual who is the general manager at that point can discuss how or why, or what kinds of programs you might be interested in doing at that point in time. So, short order, I recommend strongly that you adopt the ordinance as before you.
All right, Mrs. Chick?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. Colleagues, if you will remember, last Wednesday, we had a conversation in great detail on this ordinance. I think all of you were prepared to vote for it, or certainly a majority was. We held it over until today at Mr. Ferraro's request, because he wanted to weigh in on the discussion, and although he had returned that same day in council, did not want to reconsider it last week, but to discuss it today, and so...
I just came from chemotherapy, Mrs. Chick, just to remind you.
I'm very respectful of that, Mr. Ferraro, which is why I never raised the issue publicly last week. But I am very interested to hear your arguments on the merits of this, as I am to hear anyone who wants to argue on it. Colleagues, there has been, as you know, a great deal of work on loss prevention recently, done by the CAO's office in conjunction with personnel. You've heard about how the costs of workers' comp have risen dramatically in the last four to five years, rather than go down as the consultants that were hired advised us. I have copies of letters written by those consultants to the mayor's office, almost begging for a letter to come out of his office to general managers, asking general managers or directing general managers to implement the early return-to-work policy that had been approved by council, had been supported by the Joint Labor Management Committee. That letter was never sent. In addition, as Mr. Fujioka said, certainly, holding general managers responsible for merit pay for reducing risk management was, again, something the council supported, but it didn't happen. If there is a substantive argument that shows that switching risk management at this point in time to a brand-new Office of Finance that is primarily mandated to improve collections, something the business community is constantly looking to us to do legitimately, then I am interested in hearing those arguments. But to date, I have not. I appreciate the fact that the mayor's staff yesterday came in to talk to me about how they had called the city of Arizona, that has a very different structure than we do, but has a Department of Finance that has risk management, and some of the good ideas that they have there. Mr. Fujioka has explained to me that the city of Los Angeles is already doing most of those good ideas, and that those were ideas he had shared with the mayor's office. But there's never been anything preventing us or the mayor's staff from calling around to other cities, always looking for good ideas to improve things. We don't have to have it in the Office of Finance to make those improvements. And finally, and most importantly, because not only am I dedicated to making decisions based on what is truly in the best interest of the city, but also what makes sense vis-a-vis the charter, if we transfer now risk management to the Office of Finance that does not have a general manager, or a structure, or an organization, I don't think at all we're going to be improving anything. And what my suggestion is, is to pass the ordinance that your Charter Ad-Hoc Committee is presenting to you today. Send Mr. Ferraro's motion 7A to Charter Ad-Hoc Committee. When a general manager is hired for the Office of Finance, I will schedule immediately a meeting to hear from that general manager, what are the plans to take over risk management? What are the steps that that person is going to initiate to improve risk management and its administration?
All right, Mrs. Chick.
And we will bring that argument back to council, and it can be decided at any time to transfer risk management. I said in my earlier arguments, this is an office that can evolve over time. We need to improve collections first.
Thank you, Mrs. Chick.
We need to get the structure set up, and I ask for your support in sending 7A to committee and passing the ordinance today.
Ms. Goldberg?
I want to talk about what this is not, in my perspective. This is not about the mayor versus the council. This is not about the CAO versus the mayor, or any of that other stuff. From my point of view, this is about the fact that we finally have a joint labor management group that has begun to make some progress on an issue. I said repeatedly in the committee and here, and I'll say it again, I'm not saying that this should never be a part of the Department of Finance. At some point, maybe it should be. But not today. Not now. Because you do not want...
I wanna talk about what this is not, in my perspective. This is not about the mayor versus the council. This is not about the C O versus the mayor or any of that other stuff. From my point of view, this is about the fact that we finally have a joint labor management group that has begun to make some progress on an issue. I said repeatedly in the committee and here, and I'll say it again, I'm not saying that this should never be a part of the Department of Finance. At some point, maybe it should be. But not today, not now, because you do not want to lose momentum. Colleagues, I wanna tell you the most important truth about workers' comp. If the employee unions don't buy into the changes, they won't happen. We have buy-in for the first time in the seven years I've been here. That's remarkable, because employee unions are gonna be asking their colleagues in their bargaining units to do things, to make changes, which save money. And that money can only come from one place, and that's from them not getting as much as they were getting before. And that's a hard thing for a bargaining unit to do, but with joint labor management, they have decided to do that. They've decided that there are ways that can be better. They have pushed on us to do this. They have made recommendations. We've adopted those recommendations, and I would simply argue, there is world enough in time to make this decision. Give that process a chance to become embedded, and then if there's a decision to move it later, it can move anywhere. But don't move it now. This is not the right time. I've said repeatedly, and I meant it, and it was not disingenuous. I don't care where it ends up eventually. I really don't. But not right now. Right now, there is a actual movement to change behavior and practices on earlier return to work. That's where you save the money. On earlier settlement of claims, so that they don't become 15- or 20-year payouts. Those are the areas where we save money as a city. Prevention. Those are all areas that we've agreed to and that we have a chance to make a difference on. All of the supposed savings we were gonna get from third-party administrators, eh, didn't get 'em. Okay, that's because it wasn't part of a larger strategy. We now have an opportunity to make a difference, and I'm simply saying, stay the course for now. Six months, a year from now, when those practices have become embedded in the culture of the system and you still wanna move it, come talk to me, I'll listen. But don't do it today. I'm really asking you to stay the course and to give the joint labor management process a chance to actually function, so that we can finally get a handle on these escalating workers' comp causes, costs. And then, we can put it anywhere, once it becomes a part of the culture of the system.
Thank you.
And so that's, that's my take on it, and I urge you to vote no on the amendment and to pass the original proposal.
Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I am supporting 7A. I second the motion because I have a different take on this issue. I do not disagree that worker safety is important and workers' comp is an issue, but let's not act as if the whole world of risk management revolves around only workers' comp. One of the areas that we have had many problems is the fact that we get sued incredibly amount, incredible amount, based on faulty, either sidewalks or areas in our parks, or faulty design in some of our intersections, or just basic poor performance on someone's part, or basic human error on the part of our employees. And that's gonna happen. We're not in the error-free world. As human beings, we make mistakes. And one of the things that this whole debate reminds me of is when I was for that short period of time on budget and finance, Councilmember Fuer was questioning Recreation and Parks about the fact that there was one park that had a huge hole in it, and we had been sued on that. And that therefore, now that we had one lawsuit on the books, we were on notice for that problem. And therefore, we could never claim that we weren't aware of the problem. And so Councilmember Fuer suggested that we put a cone out there, and the department came back and said, but the cones get stolen. And Councilmember Fuer said, well, okay, what do you wanna pay? You wanna pay a multi-dollar lawsuit, or do you wanna pay for cones? That's risk management. My, the reason I support it going into the Office of Finance is because the executive branch, the mayor's office, is responsible for overseeing the departments. Who's gonna hold the department head responsible for not choosing a cone and leaving us exposed to further lawsuits? That's why the Office of Finance makes good sense. That's how we divide our labor. If we're making decisions, then we're gonna be proactive. If we wanna suggest or retrain employees on how to do their job in terms of just simple things, like the example that was pointed out about in Phoenix, how they noticed that a lot of their car accidents or a lot of the lawsuits that were arising were out of just car accidents, and they reinstated driver training in the department, and that reduced the number of lawsuits, those are the types of things that the executive branch is responsible for, making the departments more efficient and reducing our risk of lawsuits. That's why I support Councilmember or Council President Ferraro's motion. I believe risk management isn't about just being reactive and doing analysis and research as to what would be cheaper, whether we go with our own, being self-insured, or go outside, but it's actually about doing something to prevent lawsuits. And that's why, based on the experience I had in the short time I was on Budget and Finance, the departments have to be held accountable. And so the mayor's office will be the person that can hold them accountable.
Mr. Burnson.
Members of the council, a lot of people are portraying this as a feud between the council, between the mayor, between the C O and the mayor, and between other parties. I just wanna make one thing very clear, as I make my vote on this particular issue. This has nothing to do with any of the personalities that are now involved. What we're doing today deals with the future of the city. All of us are gonna be gone, with the exception of a couple of us here, in three years. And some of us may be gone before that. You never know. You know, you know how recalls are. I'm just kidding. But the point is, the point is that this is not a personal, I, I wanna, I wanna make it very clear, because, you know, there are pressures on all sides. My vote is gonna be predicated on what I think is appropriate for the future of the city. And it should not be construed that I'm voting against the mayor, I'm voting against the council, I'm voting against the C O, I'm voting, I want that to be clear. My vote, and I'm, and I'm gonna vote for the committee report, is gonna be based upon the fact that I think that's what's correct. Now, if that doesn't work out, we have the ability to change that in the future. But for the moment, I'm gonna go with that, and in spite of 7A, I'm gonna not vote for 7A, I'm gonna vote for the committee report.
Chair recognizes Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you, Madam President. I, I share, I think, the sentiment that I've heard expressed by the majority of people, and that is that there's no reason to rush to make a change. We are going to be involved come July 1st in some major changes and upheavals, much of which we've already accomplished and encouraged, both with the implementation of the new Charter and many of the ordinances. What appealed to me about this is that clearly we can make a change. Risk management, as we're discussing, is, is critical. It's vital. I think we see it being operated well in only one or two departments. As I heard Councilmember Pacheco talking about the issue of lawsuits and litigation and ways of avoiding it, the area where I think we've made the best strides in risk management is in the city attorney's office, as we have seen Cecil Marr and others come in and evaluate our police cases, evaluate our other liability cases, and make proactive changes. And tied with the litigation are also recommendations, as we ask in Budget and Finance and in the council, what have we done to change it? So arguably, that that's being done the best today is in the city attorney's office, and there may be an argument that risk management should be in the city attorney's office. But inasmuch as there are any number of places where it might be able to be done well, I think at this point, as we're venturing into a new course, creating a new entity called the Office of Finance, charged with, in the Charter, a number of responsibilities, at this point, we shouldn't overload it, an unknown entity, with some very, very new responsibilities, different from that that it's already obligated to perform. And so I believe that this recommendation is a just one, is what the committee has recommended. I appreciate Ms. Chick's comments that 7A should go back to committee. Another thought that I had is very much like what we did with the area planning commissions, which has been one of the other items of some degree of discussion as we implemented a new Charter changes, whether it should be six or seven, where the boundary should be, what should be in it, what should they be handling. We said we are embarking on a new course, and we are gonna ask that 18 months or two years after it's been in place, that we then revisit it. I think that is something we should do as well in this, whether we do it with 7A very soon, or whether we do it in saying, a year out, 18 months out, two years out, when we have the new people in place, the Office of Finance, we have a new manager, we have a system, we have incorporated and accomplished those that are Charter mandated, then let's look and see what adjustments should be made. But I, and so the only suggestion I would make is that the committee report acknowledge, perhaps by amendment, that this would be obligated to be reviewed within two years' time. And I would make that amendment, so that we know that it's not just on the shelf, could be, should be, but that it will be in two years.
I'll second that, ma'am.
Mr. Wax.
Who doesn't wanna do that? Somebody doesn't wanna do that. Jimmy?
Yes. Mr. President, I am gonna support your motion 7A. First of all, I think that either is consistent with the new Charter. The new Charter permits it to be one way, or it permits it to be the other way, so that there's really no inconsistency with either approach. The reason I'm supporting it, and I'm not sure that it's necessarily going to make the difference, the reason I'm supporting it is because I think risk management is one of the areas in which the city has failed. I think our, our performance rate in risk management in many areas, such as Mr. Pacheco mentioned, with workers' comp and others, irrespective of who's to blame or why, the bottom line is, is that in risk management, we're doing a poor job. Now, will it be better if we put it over into the new Office of Finance? I'm not sure. I remember talking to the mayor's office, being extremely unhappy with the way the workers' comp system was going and the third-party administrator was going and wasn't being implemented, and I was told by them, don't worry, we have complete confidence in Mr. Fujioka. He, listen to him, and it'll be fixed. You know? So now, if we're gonna put it over to someone who said that, you know, I, I don't know whether it's gonna get better, but I know they'll be, we'll know who to blame if it doesn't. And that's probably the one reason behind, in my opinion, fixing it someplace where you can hold someone accountable for doing the job or not. And wherever it goes, it's not gonna be done alone. Wherever it goes, everyone, the ORS, Finance, council, department heads, all are gonna have to make it work. All are gonna have to do their part to implement it. Nobody is gonna be left out of the process. The only thing is, there'll finally be a place where you can say, it isn't working and it's your fault, it's your job, you're responsible. We don't have that now. So the system continues to go on as it is endlessly with problems, and then, and this is one of those cases, if it's broken, you try to fix it. I'm not sure that this will fix it, based upon the past performance in the office upstairs, but at least there'll be a place to fix responsibility, if not to fix the problem. Either way, we're all gonna have to do the same job. Either way, we're all gonna have to participate. There's a role for the city attorney, there's a role for the CLA, there's a role for the council, the mayor, the general managers. No one's gonna be able to do this alone. It's simply a matter of when it's not done and it's failing, as it has failed miserably in many cases in the past, there will be a place to fix responsibility. So I think that 7A would be an effort to fix the problem. At minimum, it will fix the blame if the problem is not resolved, and I will support it. If not, we're gonna do the same thing, if we don't pass 7A and we go with the committee report, we're gonna have to deal with the same issues and the same players, and we're gonna have to hold someone else responsible. But the point is, we've got to make progress, we've got to make change. I agree with some of the factors you mentioned, Ms. Goldberg, but in fact of the matter is, third-party administrators was not a recommendation in isolation. It was, you were on the committee at the time, it was a part of a recommendation of an entire range of things that had to be dealt with if we were gonna reduce costs. So it, but, but that portion of it, the third-party administrator, is failing. Some people, the consultants, blame the city attorney, in fact, if you talk to them. Everyone has the blame someplace else. No, and I remember talking to the mayor, and he said, oh, trust Bill, he'll, Bill'll take care of it. No, he didn't say it, his staff said that. And, and the point of it is, now we're arguing, we're gonna argue endlessly, and if, all we do is argue endlessly and come back and see that, that it isn't getting done, then everybody loses. So maybe by fixing responsibility, you force people to take the bull by the horns and be held accountable.
Thank you, Mr. Wax.
Because that's a powerful motivation in any, in any culture, in any factor. But either way, we all have to do the same thing to try to make things better.
Mr. Fuer.
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I, Joel said a number of things that I agree with, but one point that I think it's important for us to bear in mind as we go through all our Charter reform implementation efforts, is what is the most important value we wanna focus on? Accountability is indeed a very important focus, but I would frame it a little differently because for me, the most important issue is not identifying someone to blame if things don't go well, it's structuring government to actually solve our problems effectively. And that's really the goal of Charter reform, from my standpoint. One reason I was a promoter of it is I wanted to see if we could help create the conditions in which we could solve problems better than we have been in the past, because that's why we're elected, when push comes to shove. So I view all these issues through that lens. Now, when it comes to this issue, the motion 7A before us has something to commend it in the following respect. And we said this in the Charter Committee. The risk management program has not been as good as it could be, by a long shot, on many different levels, and a lot of us refer to that today. And the most appealing aspect of 7A is that it would place directive authority someplace, which has been an issue. The inability for us to say, this is what will be when it comes to risk management, has been an issue. But it's also true, however, that there could have been other methods already underway to do the same thing. So having said all that, I'm not averse to the notion of risk management being elsewhere. And I'm interested in finding ways to assure that risk management actually be implemented in departments which in most cases have been lax in effectuating that goal. But for today, I think it's premature to adopt 7A, for reasons that other people have already stated. By the time you speak seventh, people have already said what is needed to be said. But I think that the idea of being open to this is very important. I am not close-minded on this, I think none of us should be, because risk management has to get better here, and if we don't find a way to actually enforce some meaningful rules on risk management citywide, then I think all of us will be the losers. But I think not today. I think that, as I said last time, that the Charter Commissions and their respective presidents did evaluate this issue with great care and purposely chose not to put in place what 7A, among other things, memorializes. And I think it's wise for us to stay that course, the course that the voters actually approved, focus on problem-solving, once we get the department up and running. And then I, perhaps in a few months, we'll adopt an approach like 7A, but it's premature today.
Mr. Holden.
I changed my vote on item six. Let the record show. It's on tape.
What did you say, Mr. Holden? I didn't hear that.
I wanna go with my item no. Well, you tricked that one on me, but I'll talk about that with you later, because you're good. I gotta make, I gotta make a decision on this.
We'll have a, and good discussion later.
Yeah, yeah. I'd make a good, I'd have to make a decision on this. Do I choose you, or do I choose Deaton? Now, that's, it's all about, I never saw Deaton and you on opposite sides. Now, when Deaton wins, what's gonna happen? He's not even elected. But I will say this--
He'll, he'll move to Field Beach.
But I will say this--
You have some space in the Marina Farm eat?
Of course. You have the Julie Butcher coming down here. Now, you know that pushed me on your side, because you know how I feel about Julie Butcher. She's the worst person you can send to ask me to do anything. That's my opinion. That's me. I know Ms. Goldberg looks at me like she can pull my eyes out and my tongue too, but that's okay. If she doesn't, yeah, all right. Because if she did, she would do just that, plug my eyes out and pull my tongue out. But in any case, I, I must tell you, some of his personality, and some of his say, well, I'm gonna do what's good for the city at this time. I heard Mr. Burnson say that. But there's one person here who, who's got nothing to lose, because his destiny has already been determined by the mayor's office. And yet, he stands firm in his position to say that risk management should stay where it's at. And that takes a lot of courage, and what we need around here is independence. What we don't have, this individuals, for as long as they've been in that office, have been independent, and being independent has got them in a lot of trouble. And for that reason, I have put my faith and trust in his judgment, not just for today, but for the time that he's served in that position, Mr. Fujioka. I mean, we need to have more people in office like you. And God willing, I'm sure that'll happen someday. But I just want you to know that I'm not going with Deaton on this one. I'm not going, choose between Deaton and John, because they're both of my friends. I love them both. But I'm gonna vote with your recommendation. That's not with Julie Butcher either. And so therefore, if you're on the committee report, and I looked that over very carefully regarding risk management and what's gonna be cost-effective for the city, that's where I'm gonna go. I wanna say down the, one other thing. As the mayor of this city have absolute control and power over all general managing department, he can hire and fire, he can call them to his office. He can call him into his office. If Fujioka's not doing what he wants to do, he says, "You do it, or you're out of here." And also, general service, no matter who, what department, you're out of here. And we can't do anything about it with, because you're never going to get that many votes. You've got a few guys around here locked in no matter what. And thank God that Jimmy Hahn's got a good heart.
Is there anybody you didn't offend, Nate? Mr. Hernandez?
Mr. President, Mr. Holden say something bad about me?
I think, I think you're the only one, Mike.
Mr. President, members of the council, let me start by saying that I think I'm one of the few members who can claim to have 447 days left on, on not only this council, but as a public official. And I can say that because that's my reality. I find it interesting that the council member from the second, the fourteenth, and the fourth basically are supporting the amendment, and they will be here longer. I think Mr. Wax is hoping it's in a different capacity, but that's a hope. The reality is, they will be here longer, and they'll be part of this review. What I can share with you is the time that I have been here. The issue of risk management has come onto the radar of the city and the council, and it started in government efficiency, if I remember correctly, but Mr. Wax was looking at it. I think that Ms. Chick was looking at it. And there has been some reform and some changes in that direction, and many of those changes have been more recent than the tenure that I've been as a public official. Now, I kind of want to put that backdrop, because what's happening at this time is an entire change of how this city is going to be governed. And it's happening at many levels. It's happening in the area of planning. It's happening in the area of oversight of department heads and the ability to hire and fire them. It's happening in the area basically of, of neighborhood councils and their participation. And so a lot of work is ongoing in terms of change right now. At the same time, there will be members who are going to be here longer than the 447 days, and they'll be able to continue to adjust and work on that change. Now, have you noticed, I took the mayor out of this whole debate? And it's because the reality is, it is us that are dealing with the future of the city of Los Angeles. And the mayor, whoever it may be, is going to be different. And so from my perspective, right now, our plate is full in regards to all the change that we're doing. And I think caution should be looked at, and that's what the committee report is recommending. I haven't heard anybody say it doesn't belong in the Department of Finance. What I've heard is, let's not put it on that plate today. Let's allow for the transformation. Let's review that transformation, and let's make sure that we're doing the proper thing. And I think it's caution that's before us right now in regards to a lot of change happening in the city. And this is not the, the mayor versus the council battle that we will be facing when we have some more important issues, like budget priorities, at a time when the budget is very strained. So from my perspective, I also will be supporting the committee report, and it's a vote of caution on my part.
Mr. Ridley Thomas.
Mr. President, members of the council, Mr. Burnson, I rise simply to say that the work of the committee has been sufficiently thorough so as to persuade me that that is the responsible, prudent course to take. Mr. Wax, the point that you make about all of us will have a hand in whatever happens is precisely what gives some of us pause. There seems to be an increasing disregard for the checks and balances that have to be in place in order for this government, local government, to be run in an open, constructive, and effective way. I believe that the charter changes that have been adopted afford us the opportunity to preserve checks and balances. I further believe that the concentration of power is a fundamental mistake, and the acquisitive nature of this administration toward that end is at the risk of effective governance in the city of Los Angeles. And I wish to say that this council can help us avoid that consequence. And I believe, as duly-elected representatives of the city at large, we are duty-bound to dispatch our oath in that connection. And so I believe that it is reasonable to adopt the committee report and proceed on an evaluative basis as to what ultimately could change pursuant to the experience that we review over the next 12 months and beyond. Thank you.
Mrs. Chick.
I move the previous question.
Prepare the roll on the previous question. Tabulate the vote.
Fifteen ayes.
Okay, then, we have the motion seven A, and you requested that go to committee? Is there any objections to that? All right, prepare the roll. Seven A to go to committee.
Is the motion, who we're voting on, to go to committee or to approve the motion?
No, to go to committee.
Okay.
All right, prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eight ayes, seven noes.
That goes to committee. Next item is the committee report. Prepare the roll.
As amended by council member Ms. Sikowsky.
Yeah, that amendment, that's accepted. Prepare the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes, one no.
That is approved. Fourth with on that. Next item.
Item number eight calls special and also has amendments.
Item number eight, we do have some people who want to be heard.
Mr. President, I would ask for a 10-minute hearing.
Is there any objections to a 10-minute hearing? I've seen none. Glenn Spencer. Glenn Spencer, did you want to be heard on this?
Thank you very much, President Ferraro, members of the city council. My name is Glenn Spencer. I'm president of Voice of Citizens Together, the largest immigration reform organization in Los Angeles County. Back in 1993, we ran a project called Feet to the Fire, where we were going to try to determine the position of every member running for office on the issue of immigration. We asked questions, and we published these answers in the newspaper. I personally asked Mayor Richard Reardon the following question. I stated, "California Attorney General Dan Lundgren has determined that Special Order 40 is unconstitutional. Do you believe that it should be rescinded?" His answer, yes. The question was asked at his campaign headquarters in Sherman Oaks. It was witnessed by Alan Bockall, who signed a statement so testifying. Based on his response, our organization supported Mr. Reardon for mayor. We were supporting him when Clinton appeared in Valley College. We were out in force. Remember the haircut? After he was elected, Mayor Reardon refused to answer our inquiries regarding Special Order 40. Richard Reardon thus added his name to the long list of those who have lied to the people, betrayed their interests, and spit on the Constitution of the United States. More recently, this was done by Governor Gray Davis when he killed Proposition 187, well, because he was afraid it was constitutional. Davis said Proposition was 187 because one judge, Mariana Felsner, said so. But in the case known as Vazquez, Felsner said that local police cannot enforce immigration laws. She was overturned by the Tenth Circuit Court of Appeals, and last October, the Supreme Court said, allowed that decision to stand. They said, "We further conclude that the law does not limit or displace the pre-existing general authority of state or local police officers to investigate and make arrests for violation of federal law, including immigration laws." Instead, the law merely creates an additional vehicle for the enforcement of immigration laws, and the Supreme Court has sustained that decision. Special Order 40 was ruled unconstitutional by the California Attorney General. In Proposition 187, 60 percent of the people of the state of California voted to mandate cooperation.
Mr. Spencer, you don't, I'm not going to use all the time now. Please wrap it up, because we're going to move on with some other people.
The Supreme Court has said that it's constitutional. The Congress of the United States has passed a law mandating cooperation between the local police and the INS.
All right, thank you very much.
And what we're saying is, it is Proposition, whether Special Order 40 is unconstitutional, and you should rescind it immediately, just as Mayor Reardon promised to do in 1993. Thank you very much.
Angelica Salas, and then Art Goldberg.
My name is Angelica Salas. I'm the executive director of the Coalition for Humane Immigrant Rights of Los Angeles. I speak today on behalf of the different immigrant communities throughout Los Angeles have been, that have been affected by the LAPD Rampart scandal that has spread throughout the other LAPD divisions throughout the city. We stand today behind Councilmember Jackie Goldberg's efforts to have the city affirm its support for Special Order 40, to enhance its protection, and create a task force of immigrant rights groups to look into INS-LAPD collaboration and violations of Special Order 40. Through growing evidence about the INS and Rampart Crash Unit officers working together to process the deportation of over 160 immigrants who were suspected of being involved in gang-related activities or witnesses to potential cases of police misconduct, has brought to public attention a serious problem that has been common knowledge to immigrant rights community for many years, the continuing violation of Special Order 40. Over the years, we have received calls and complaints from immigrant residents about police officers engaging in acts that clearly violate this special order. The following highlights the most notable examples of these complaints. Street vendors have been asked by LAPD Rampart Division officers about their immigration status. How long have you been in this country? Do you have a social security number? Did you get, how did you get to this country? Police officers throughout the city have stopped day laborers looking for work at street corners and questioned about, questioned them about their immigration status. In one particular corner at Beverly and La Jolla in West Los Angeles, the Hollywood Division police officers have told day laborers they have no legal right to be in this country and that they would be deported if they did not leave the area. These are just some of many examples of the gross disregard for the constitutional rights of individuals.
Ms., you, you want to use all the time?
Yes, and I just want to say, I just want to say that this is an important motion for the immigrant community.
Thank you.
It protects them, and it protects their ability to be able to report crime and protect themselves from being victims of crime. Thank you very much.
Art Goldberg, and then Don White.
I, of course, believe that they should enforce Special Order 40. Working in Echo Park and living there for the last, since 1969, it's a kind of thing that has a total effect on the community when the community do not trust the police or the people that enforce the law in the area. Furthermore, I think that this issue brings out a major thing that the city council has not dealt with. We have a police commission. The police commission and the people that review it have all this time known about Special Order 40. However, they've never enforced it, and they've had all of these problems that have taken place. The community in Los Angeles really wants the city council to take some leadership on the whole current problem that exists in this city. No longer can we say, when we see 74 percent of the people wanting an independent commission, that we shouldn't have an independent commission. If you go into any neighborhood, working class minority.
Please, just stay on the subject, man.
This is on the subject. The subject is that if you have an independent commission, then you don't have to worry about these violations going on all the time, because you have someone like Merrick Bob, who will be there, independent from the police, independent from the entire apparatus, to enforce the rights of the people that have been violated. I live in a community, in fact, my son had an incident with the police, and nothing was ever done to anybody that has been messing with the people in the community. We need outside people to view it. The people in L.A. want it, and that's what we have to have for our future. Thank you.
Don White.
My name is Don White. I'm with Clinica Para Las Americas in the Pico Union District, also with United Teachers of Los Angeles, a charter member, and with Americans for Democratic Action. For many years in the public schools, we've tried to educate and reaffirm the concept that students in our public schools and their families can go to the police without any fear of retribution. If a family of one of our students is the victim of a crime or the witness to a crime, we have said to them over the years, for many decades, "You may use police services without the fear of reprisals, without the fear that immigration will be brought in." What has happened in Los Angeles in the last period has set back this program for decades. Our patients and clients at Clinica Para Las Americas, we also try to tell them, "If this is a battered woman we're dealing with, you have a right to go to the police. You have a right to seek redress of your grievance." At the present time, our patients and clients at Clinica Para Las Americas, the students in the public school, my union is very concerned that we must begin to rebuild the credibility of the police department. We must rebuild the credibility of the concept that witnesses to crime and victims of crime have a right to go to the police and to be, to receive those services without the worry that an INS officer might be there. We fully support Councilwoman Goldberg's initiative and motion here, and we call for its passage, the enhancement. We think the enhancement is very, very valuable. We also call for an independent investigation of the scandal that has rocked not only Rampart, but the whole police department. An independent investigation is the only way that credibility around this investigation can be established. So we join with other speakers in calling for passage.
We have time for one more speaker. James Rafferty.
Yeah, actually, it's James Rafferty, the executive director of the Los Angeles Chapter of the National Lawyers Guild and a member of the Los Angeles Coalition for Police Accountability. We thank Councilmember Goldberg for this motion. Of course, we support it. But it is, of course, also a very modest first step towards what this council ought to be doing by way of showing some leadership. The city of Los Angeles, your constituents are way ahead of you. They're way ahead of you. As last Sunday's L.A. Times showed, 75 percent of them think that all of these other so-called investigations are bogus. They don't trust them. They don't trust their own police department. They're losing confidence in the city. What they have said, 75 percent of them, all of the communities in this city, is that we need an independent tribunal, an independent tribunal. How long is it going to take for this council to finally exercise the kind of leadership that the people of this city are calling for? They're way ahead of you. You're supposed to be leading. You're not even doing a good job of following at this point. They're way ahead of you. Get with the program. Understand, understand that those that have a stake in the outcome of an investigation cannot be trusted to do an investigation that will enjoy the confidence of the people that you represent. That's what the intelligent, good people of Los Angeles are telling you. Listen to your constituents. Take the step. How many more months will it take before you finally call for the independent investigation that when a similar situation in New York arose, they called for in two months? You've been dawing for months and months and months. It's time to act.
Thank you. Okay. All right, the public, public hearing is closed. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, first of all, for your information, because a lot of us hadn't seen it, I ask that we have a copy of Special Order 40 just be put on everybody's desk. I want to move item A to A, which was graciously seconded by the chair of the Public Safety Committee, Councilmember Ms. Sikowski, which really doesn't change anything that we did in committee, but which tries to make clear the intent. And I left in the originals so you could see the changes, so that you could see that we are not trying to add anything. I've talked with Mr. Edo, and he says that they, they have no problem with it, except for maybe number four, they're not sure they can do it in two weeks. They're not sure they can do it in two weeks. And I would say publicly that if two weeks is a problem, obviously, take more time. But we don't want it to take an endless amount of time. Having said that, we want to just make sure that the language is clear. Let me just explain the motivation. I think the speakers covered it, and so I'll be very brief. One of the things that has happened as a result of the crisis with the police department has been a dramatic change in attitude by the immigrant population, including people here absolutely legally and documented and with papers about whether or not it is safe for them to call the police. When that happens—and that's why in 1979, this was passed in the first place—when that happens, you lose witnesses to crimes, you lose victims even calling the police after being a victim of a crime, and you lose the opportunity for the police to do their work, the courts to do their work, and all of us, not just the immigrant population, which now says, "Nah, I tried it. Now I'm not so sure whether it's safe or not." All of us suffer, and we can't allow that to happen. So not only do I want us to make sure that we let the police commission know it's our desire to have them act and to make it clear to everyone in the department through the chief that this is still the standing order, but we want to make it clear that our goal is to completely reassure the public, all of the public, everyone who lives or works in Los Angeles, that if they see a crime, they should call and report it. If they are a victim of crime, they should call and report it. If they are a witness, they should come and testify, because to fail to do that makes this city unsafe, and we cannot allow that, not to mention, we cannot allow the human rights violations to continue that have gone on in the name of so-called protection of the city. So all of those reasons, I ask for unanimous vote on this, and I thank the Chair of Public Safety for her leadership in bringing this in a timely fashion to this full council.
Thank you. Mr. Pacheco.
Mr. President, colleagues, I do rise in support of the motion. I do believe that it's time that we reaffirm our position on Special Order 40. I do agree—I do agree that we need to provide some guidance. I was very much comforted by the fact that in committee, we came out with a very bright-line rule about the regular stationing of INS officers. The amendment, Motion 8A, that was brought in, I believe that needs some clarification. So let me openly suggest some clarification on Number 1. So for those of you who have a copy of it, I'd ask that you follow along, and I'll tell you why the changes I'm suggesting are important. First of all, I would eliminate the words "any on-duty INS or Border Patrol Officer." I think that's a limitation. I think we should remove the presence of any INS or Border Patrol Officer. The fact that they're on-duty or off-duty really should not be a factor. They either work for the INS, or they work for Border Patrol. So we don't want them at the station. And the only clarification I want to bring up is, I don't understand the language it says with respect to a specific identifiable investigation of a federal law violation. I wholeheartedly agree that if we're going to have INS or Border Patrol officers, they must be invited. I thought it would be the watch commander or acting watch commander of each station. I don't understand what's meant by commanding officer or acting commanding officer. That's just because as a DA, when I call the police station, I would deal with the watch commander. So I would expect that we want to hold people accountable, and the best person to hold accountable would be the watch commander at each station. So I would change that to the watch commander or acting watch commander. Now, obviously, we cannot have a complete prohibition of these individuals because there are times when they will be victims of crimes or they will be interviewed as witnesses of a crime. So I think we have to cover that in some fashion. So I would suggest that unless they are being interviewed as a witness of a crime or they're reporting the crime as a victim, that would seem to be a time when we should hear from them. But other than that, they should not be at the police stations doing any other sort of INS-related or Border Patrol work. So those are the changes that I would recommend, to just bring a bright-line rule on this issue so that the watch commanders know exactly what they have to do at each station. So I'd like to move that.
Mr. President, I'll accept the first one, removing the words "on-duty" as a friendly amendment, but I'm not yet convinced that watch commanders should be substituted for commanding officer or acting commanding officer. So I'd ask that we vote on that separately.
Okay. Mrs. Chik.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I remember quite some years ago, as the then Chair of Public Safety Committee, bringing into committee a discussion of Special Order 40 because there had been so much misperception on the part of the public in terms of what exactly Special Order 40 is. And I think this presents us an opportunity today, if there is someone from the LAPD who could come to the table and explain, despite the fact we have some written material on it, the viewers in the city could benefit from that discussion. I'd also like to add to the mix here the comments that my colleagues have made about the reasons that we must keep this policy in place. I believe that there is a motion still pending in Public Safety Committee that takes a look at a bill in Sacramento that the governor vetoed, wanting to leave it up to local municipalities about having police departments do research and produce figures and examine themselves and report on it on racial profiling. And I am very supportive of that motion going forward. I think if, as Chief Park says, "It's not a problem in Los Angeles," then the report will do nothing but show that. And secondly, there was an article in today's paper about a tragedy of a young man, a young African-American man, who died in a police pursuit. And the point of the article was that he was being pursued and had been pulled over innumerable times because, as a hard-working young man, he drove a BMW and dressed in nice clothes and had been stopped over and over to the point where, as his family stated, he was quite afraid of the police. And so he used poor judgment and didn't stop when asked to, and ended up dying in an automobile accident. I think both for immigrants in this country, for people of all creed and color, we need to have policies that ensure that our police officers are enforcing the law, but enforcing it in a way that doesn't create bias and discrimination against any particular group. Special Order 40 is part of that.
Thank you. Mrs. Walters.
Councilmembers, what we have witnessed occurring at the stations where these INS agents have been operating in conjunction with the police department is the kind of thing we've come to expect from totalitarian governments, from governments that we condemn because of their treatment, their lack of human rights sensitivity. And I say to you today that we are guilty of transgressing on human rights when we allow INS agents to be in the police stations of our city. There is no connection that should ever occur under any set of circumstances with an immigration official and the police department on a regular basis, just being stationed there and grabbing folks and taking them off. Years ago, when I was teaching, and I taught over here at Evans Adult School, we had a young woman—I had a class of young people—who were here on student visas, and part of their work here was to learn English as well as to learn more about the professions that they were in. I had one young woman who was a fashion designer, and part of her work, her visa allowed her to work in the garment industry as an intern, to learn about what goes on here. And one day, we got a call—I got a call at the school that she had been apprehended in INS sweep and would not be in class, and she had nobody to contact, had no way to get assistance. I called One Stop Immigration Center. We took a classroom collection, got about $500, and I personally went over to immigration. They had already loaded her on a bus, and I thought the INS agent was going to have a stroke because I had the audacity to come and say, "I want this young woman released to me." That experience left an indelible mark on me. If I didn't have any understanding or sensitivity with respect to INS before, that certainly brought me up short, made me recognize the way that immigrants are treated here. And it was at that time, about 23, 24 years ago, they were just taking folks to the border and letting them out. And she wasn't from Mexico. So I just—when I think about what INS has the record of handling people who are immigrants that they suspect of being here without papers has been, it gives me a cold chill to think that we in the police department may have been complicit in some of that. So I would urge us to make these amendments, to restore Special Order 40 to enforcement as it was intended to be.
Mr. Hernandez.
Mr. President, members of the council, you know, I think it's a sad day that we have to stand here and make these kinds of statements because I think we're all in agreement that Los Angeles is a special city, in a city basically where it's hard to determine who's from Los Angeles and who's not from Los Angeles. And when I say that in a state called California that has had a history of immigration that goes from its inception, that very few people want to recognize. You know, in my neighborhood, there was times when you'd have INS vans show up and officers would run out and just pick up people and put them in. There's been a history in the city of Los Angeles where people have been deported regardless of their status. But sorry to say that it takes the Supreme Court and it takes appellate courts to guarantee people the right to be treated as human beings regardless of race, ethnicity, and color. And the state appellate court just issued a ruling that INS officers cannot profile and stop people based on ethnicity. You see, what's sad to me is—I remember registering voters at the Pioneer Market in Echo Park and the pride that I saw immigrants taking and being able to register to vote. But I also remember going up to people who basically I thought had the right to vote and should register to vote, and they would tell me they were from Canada, they were from England, they were from France, they were not citizens. Now, when I say that, the reality is I found myself also thinking that because this person was Anglo, they had a right to vote, and I should register. And I was finding out something different. You see, what happens is people, in their own way, start profiling, and that's what we're now hearing is basically should not be the basis of stopping people. How can a police officer know someone's immigration status in a city called Los Angeles? And why should they be asking those kinds of questions? And it's because in a city called Los Angeles, we have to deal with the issue of public safety, we have to deal with respecting each other, and we have to claim to be a city of angels because we have people from all over the world. Now, we need something like Special Order 40 simply because profiling does go on. People think that because someone is selling goods on a street corner, they might be an immigrant. And the reality is, that's not our city's history. Now, I just basically am supporting Special Order 40 as it came to us, and I support the initial amendment made by Mr. Pacheco, and I don't support the second one. The reality is, the police department is no different than anybody else. They don't have the right to ask someone their immigrant status. They do have the right to develop a relationship with a community, to try and provide public safety with that community, and that's what this is about. And so, Mr. President, again, I just think it's a sad day that we continue to have this discussion because in a city called Los Angeles, there should be clear understandings that we want to treat everybody equally.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I certainly am proud to reinforce my support for Special Order 40. I just want to highlight some differences of opinion. The fact of the matter is that I had a young man named Francisco Lopez who came from Mexico, and he became gainfully employed, he got his green card. He's a citizen now. He worked on my staff. I hired him, and I helped him. He said he wanted to be a police officer. Today, he is a police officer. He's been there for about five or six years. I think—you might know him, Mike, I'm not sure, but he's there. And it's people like Francisco who are sensitive to the concerns of the immigrant community. And I think that that's important. Now, as we began to badger all police for violating immigrant rights or any other citizen, that is not necessarily the truth because Francisco, in my mind, would not do that, or nor would the other 32 percent of the entire Los Angeles Police Department do that, who are Hispanic-surname people. So I mean, at what point did the pendulum stop swinging? I know some lady, young lady, who was born in England, came here when she was eight years old. She violated, of course, the drug law. She was caught smoking marijuana, had it in her possession. Father was very prominent, he died. Mother was still here, and they were divorced. And so they put her on a three-year probation, and now they're in the process of deporting her, and there's no outcry. Where would she go, back to England? And she was only eight years old when she left, no relatives there. They're all here, and all of her friends in her life, went to middle school here, elementary school here, went to college in America. Those are the laws. That's the law. I do not anticipate—but if I ever hear, and I have Spanish-speaking people on my staff, where people who have been arrested or harassed by the police department, I have not heard of it. Maybe it happens. But in my district, we have a large population of Hispanic-speaking people, and some may be undocumented. But I can tell you this: I haven't gotten those kinds of complaints, and I'm not raising that flag. But I do endorse Special Order 40. But I don't want to give the impression, on this issue or any other issue, that the police are bad, all bad, or that they only harass people with Spanish surnames. Now, we have—the people from England, people from Canada are calling all the time, talking about the kind of problems they have. Now, we have people from Nigeria, we have people from Ethiopia, we have people—and they're not—see, it just tells me about the sensitivity of the person who's drafting Motion 8A, did not include N W C P, N W C P Legal Fund, who represents these people also who are undocumented and who also have immigration problems. It's not just one segment of our community who have these kinds of problems. It's about time that we wake up and understand that other people in our community have similar problems that must be addressed. And therefore, I'm going to offer an amendment. As we put together this commission or task force, that should include all other communities —because we can't be specific right now—that would also—who are similarly affected by Special Order 40. Do I get a second?
Second.
Okay. Ms. Sikowski.
Thank you, Mr. President. I think it's been worthwhile listening to the discussion here, and I haven't heard really a word in opposition to this. And that is the consensus of what the Public Safety Committee, when we had a very lengthy hearing, presented. We also had testimony at our hearing from the Executive Director of the Police Commission, Joe Gunn, and the Inspector General, indicating that this is the commission's view. But I think it's important that we reaffirm it after all the years that it has been in effect because precisely— effect because precisely what we discovered and read, however much it is verifiable, it is clearly a perception that, again, in some of the areas that the department was supervising with some rogue officers, there were officers who didn't obey Special Order 40, who perhaps made contact with INS which was outside of the policy. And so, it's very important that we and the commission both reaffirm Special Order 40 as the law and the policy of the land, as well as take the step that's requested in Item Number Two, for the commission to learn and determine how often Special Order 40 might have been not being followed. And they can do it better and best, not only, again, internally, but with some assistance of these groups who are most involved in looking at people who have been more often or not the victims of these kind of tactics. So I think that the committee report is very much in place. It very much reaffirms what the commission is doing as represented by its Executive Director and its Inspector General. And it is also, I think, in looking at Item Number Two, talking about reaching out to a task force, it's very much in keeping, again, with what community-based policing is all about. Dealing with those people who are of the community, who represent groups in the community and work with the department. So I think that asking that the task force be created as part of the department's involvement in this is a very good direction. And I would hope that it wouldn't even need to be a direction, that the commission would take it and the department would take it on its own. But I believe that that is consistent with what has been in effect since 1979, reaffirming it at this time because of the issues that have been raised and wanting to make sure that this is just not a policy in a book on a shelf somewhere, but a policy that is known, understood, officers are trained by it, and that it is the effort that is utilized within the department is important, particularly after what we have read about some of the issues where in fact it appears to have been violated to some degree. Again, as Mr. Holden says, not overall, but to enough of a degree to cause us a concern to reaffirm it, reaffirm it and make sure that it is the policy being enforced within the department.
Ms. Goldberg.
To close? Well, if there are other people who want to speak, I'd rather wait and close.
What else has could be said, but we have Mrs. Chick, Mr. Pacheco, and Mrs. Holden.
I'd like to close.
Our Mr. Pacheco has a follow-up.
I was just going to clarify something. I was just talking to Harry Edo from the police department, and we're both going for the same goal. We want someone accountable at the station. I was under the impression the commanding officer, acting commanding officer was not at the station, but I've just spoke to Mr. Edo, or Officer Edo, and we have Officer Davis, I think? Chief Davis, I'm sorry. So Chief, let me ask you this. The ultimate goal is we want someone we can hold accountable at the police station for inviting INS or Border Patrol officers, as originally it was stated, it was the commanding officer or acting commanding officer. Let's use Hollenbach Division as an example because I know the personnel. So Captain Piscara is the commanding officer, and he's basically nine to five, Monday through Friday. After he leaves, the acting commanding officer is still on site?
Well, when he leaves, we don't have what's called an acting commanding officer. The watch commander is the person who takes over for the period in which he's gone. For instance, in the evening hours, the commanding officer normally is not at the station, and then the watch commander is the person in charge. So there is not an acting commanding officer per se.
Okay. I think the goal is to get someone to officially do either a written invitation or something documenting that they invited this INS or Border Patrol agent. So help us get to that end. If it's not the commanding officer after they leave, is it the watch commander who's then, would be on the hook?
The watch commander's in charge, but if I just might comment a little broader. The person who the department holds accountable for everything that takes place in that station is the commanding officer. And so, if there is a violation of some kind that requires the kind of review that you're referring to, the commanding officer would do that review within that station to determine what occurred.
Oh, I understand that. Look, we understand review, but we're not, we're trying to get, to avoid review of violations. We're trying to be proactive here and require the police department do something proactively before an INS agent or Border Patrol agent can even come into the station. So we want to have a triggering mechanism before they're even in the station. And under the current language, the triggering mechanism is the commanding officer or acting commanding officer has to invite the INS agent or Border Patrol agent. So I understand where you're coming from in terms of review and accountability, in terms of if someone screws up. But we only want to get there. We want to stop that, and we want to make sure someone has been invited. So don't, with all due respect, let's not focus on the review part, let's focus on our goal. Our goal is to get a proactive person, a decision-maker, and I'm reading into motion that at the station, and I need someone to clarify that, either Ms. Goldberg or some of the advocates. But I'm hearing, I'm reading into the motion that the person at the station who has to affirmatively act before an INS agent or a Border Patrol agent can be in the station. I think that's the goal. So help us with that. Don't.
Well, it's kind of difficult to help you with it without reading the entire motion that you have. But I would still say that the commanding officer is the person who's accountable for the station, and that commanding officer will set the process by which a, within that station, by which a INS officer will be invited, as you say, to the station. But in speaking in general terms of department, if this motion is passed by the council, the department will mandate to the divisions how that will be implemented.
I understand that. That's the concern we have. See, there's a, there's a, there's a concern that if we ask for X and then the department translates X into X sub A, sub B, sub C, that we end up with someone below the commanding officer, either X sub C, making a decision. But the goal is, we want someone to make a decision. Now, the reason I focused in on the watch commander, because 24 hours, someone is a watch commander. I know for a fact that the commanding officer sometimes leaves. So I'm sorry, Mr. President, I'm just concerned that the interpretation is going to work against us, and that's my concern. The police department's going to interpret this and delegate, and maybe some sergeant is going to make the decision. And to be honest with you, with the current records of how sergeants are doing their work, I'm very concerned about how this is going to be carried out.
You know, but a sergeant may make it anyway because a sergeant could be the watch commander. So when you say watch commander, there is not always the guarantee that the person sitting in that seat may be a lieutenant. So the commanding officer, again, you know, I understand your comments, but the commanding officer is who the department looks to, to be accountable for ensuring what you're asking for is done.
Well, I'm out of time, but Ms. McElhanter, I just want to go on record saying I'm not satisfied with the answer from the police department. I do have some concerns.
But you're at almost double time, so let's go. Next is Mrs. Chick.
Yes, and I just wanted to turn to Deputy Chief Davis and ask you, not going into enormous detail, but if you could lay out for us, what is Special Order 40? And what is the department's view of Special Order 40?
Well, the department's view is that we're in support of Special Order 40, very much so. And just a very brief comment, the Special Order 40 lays out the conditions under which the department has contact with INS department. And also, in a more specific way, it specifically states that the department does not make contact with citizens based on alien status. It has to be in regards to some criminal activity that they're investigating. So just in a general term, that's what Special Order 40 is all about.
And also, I want to underscore the point that you made, that Special Order 40 does not tie the hands of LAPD in terms of dealing with serious criminals, felons, et cetera.
It does not. What we, again, what it states specifically is that alien status is not the reason for us to stop a person. It says criminal activity is the reason we should be stopping people and doing what we do for the citizens of the city of Los Angeles.
Mr. Holden.
Mr. Pacheco is correct. And if you need a matter with, where the immediate tension is needed, then somebody's got to make that decision. The commanding officer, acting commanding officer may be 10, 12 hours away, remote from the site, or a telephone, even though they carry pages, but just like being on duty 24 hours a day, and sometime they go out for dinner and they go to here. And they may not understand circumstances, may not understand the circumstance, as will the commanding officer, the watch commander, who's there on the spot. And so, you can't make a decision right away. And a person can be held over another night, another day, until such time that commanding officer arrives on the scene. So I would say before any concrete action is taken. I think Mr. Pacheco is correct. The watch commander will assume full authorities, well-trained, and more importantly, the watch commander's a kind of uniformed officer, and if he or she has a sensitivity level increase where they understand by Special Order 40 as they should and ought to, then of course that disseminates to the average patrol officer on the street. So I like the idea of the watch commander. I think it's needed, and I'm going to vote for that from the standpoint of how it function, I mean, the organization that is in that regard. Another thing while I'm here, Ms. Goldberg, and you want to close and you can respond to this, there've been a lot of statements made about certain immigrants being harassed. We don't do any reports on that. I think it's important that we have that statistical data. When a person goes down and complains about someone having committed a crime to them and they happen to be undocumented, are they harassed? Do we have information on that? Have they been deported? Do we have information on that? If none of those things occurred, or not occurring in the numbers which is being suggested, then of course we need to know that as well. The public needs to know. Well, the task force, the police department, they have that already. I mean, the task force is going to compile information based on what the police department provide for them and INS provide for them. So that information can be correlated all, right now. And I'm sure you, Chief, do you have information about the number of people who complained for, about a crime being committed against them and then they being, end up being deported?
Well, we would have that information if a person made a complaint that specifically addressed the fact that they were being stopped because of their alien status or they were being, anything else that had to do with the alien status, if they made a complaint. If their complaint is being made to other persons in the community and it never made to the department, we wouldn't have that information.
What I mean by the complaint is being made about a person's being, a crime is committed against them. They want to file a complaint against an individual. Do we turn around and harass them even though they are undocumented?
To my knowledge, we do not.
That's what I need to know. That's what has been said here today, that we do. That's the inference that's being provided. You can't leave that stigma attached against the police department. So you've got to have the information, the data, and then you make it all public because it's important. If it's being, if it's happening, then of course we should do something about it. If it's not happening, we need to know that as well.
Thank you. Mr. Hernandez.
Chief Davis? I need you to be very careful how you answer these questions because part of the question of my colleagues has kind of created some questions in my mind. Who in a division, normally a federal agent, an INS agent walks into the division, do you just let them walk around and go into a jail cell or sit on the desk and use a telephone?
Normally, when a person from another agency comes to the station, they come to the watch commander's office, whether it's INS or.
Before they can walk in to the jail?
Not be, well, not before they can walk in. No, they don't have a key to our back door, by the way. Let me just back up just a little bit. All of the doors in which the other agencies and law enforcement enter, other than the public doors on the front end of the building, the back doors are locked. They generally have to buzz their way in or be let in, so they just don't walk into the station. They don't have a key. But they normally go to the watch commander's office, or if they have business with detectives, they go to detectives.
So then, the watch commander and the detectives have to know they have an agent there?
Generally speaking, yes.
And you've read some of the accusations of what's happened at Rampart?
Yes, I have.
How could that have happened?
You know, I'm not really here to get into the details of Rampart. I think the report kind of speaks for itself in that a lot of things did occur that should not have happened.
But someone had, who was accountable, had to be aware of it?
I would, I would, I wouldn't say they were, I don't know what they were all aware of, but they should have been aware of it. So I don't want, again, I don't want to really get into that kind of detail because I don't have that.
Right. Special Order 40 also requires that they report to the department headquarters, detective headquarters, anytime that they have basically someone in their custody who has multiple misdemeanors, previous felonies who are undocumented.
You know, just as I indicated earlier, I'm here really just to give a general statement about Special Order 40. I'm not prepared to go into the.
Yeah. Members of the council, and again, I need Ms. Chick and then Ms. Sikowski to understand this. I would like that part of the task force review include the department's detectives' headquarters' divisions' logs as to any awareness of potential patterns, of potential violations, whether the department itself has conducted any audits in regards to this issue, Special Order 40, or has the department been silent about it. But Special Order 40 does require reporting whenever they were going to advise INS and who would be making those reports. And there should be an audit of how that was working and whether at any time there was any review of that information for potential violations. And if the committee chair would allow for an amendment to include that, I just think it's curious because potential violations existed and someone is accountable. And from my perspective, it starts at the chief's office. But if you're silent, the bottom line is a lot can happen. And so, the question is how much review is going on during this period? And I think the task force should look at that.
All right. Ms. Goldberg is the only one listed, and she is going to close. So if anybody else needs to talk first, do it now.
And I know, Chief, that.
Okay, there you go.
I apologize that we didn't give you more notice so that you might have had it. I didn't expect that we would be actually frankly needing this dialogue, but I'm glad that it happened and I appreciate your candor. Let me just close with a couple of items. First of all, as to the issue of whether it should be watch commander or commanding officer, I would like to leave it at least for now, commanding officer, because that is the one person who we know is in charge. The only reason I added acting commander is during vacations, the second person becomes the commander and they're called an acting commander at that time. That's it. So I would urge that we do that for now. After the task force and the commission have come back, we can review it and see if there needs to be a change. As to Mr. Holden's comments about who should be on, that's why we did include in Item Two, include but not limited to these groups. And also, we do know there is at least one organization that represents Haitians and other African immigrant groups. Chirlia is a coalition that does include African groups, but we are certainly not trying to exclude anybody, and that's why the language was include but not limited to. I believe that what we are doing today is very, very important because the goal of our reaffirmation and our goal of asking the commission to have this task force and for the department and this task force to review its work is because we have a crisis and that crisis is precipitated by some people violating this special order and in so doing, creating an environment where people no longer feel safe or comfortable in reporting crimes or being witnesses to crimes, and we cannot have that happen. The department has stood behind this Special Order 40, still does, the commission does, the council needs to. Now, we must take the next step, which is to take a look at how enforcement of the order has gone and where there are things that might, the task force might suggest to both the commission and the department as to how to make enforcement of its own special order be more effective. We can do no less on behalf of the human rights of a very vulnerable population in any society, but in a democracy, we should be different. It should not be vulnerable if you are here and you are working here and you are going to school here and you are a person who was born in some other country in a nation of immigrants. You should be entitled to the same protection from the police department. And that's been the department's opinion since 1979, and it is this council's opinion, and we should pass 8A and 8 as therefore amended unanimously so that we can make that message loud and clearly to the entire city of Los Angeles. Thank you.
Okay. We have, Mr. Pacheco has a point of order.
I had made an amendment that got a second by Ms. Sikowski. I want to withdraw as part of the amendment, the change to watch commander. Ms. Goldberg and I spoke about that. But I still think we need to end the sentence after acting commanding officer. This was the amendment.
Okay, now.
And then, I'm just, putting the amendment out so when we vote, people know what they're voting on.
Right. Is that the amendment that is listed as 8A or a different amendment?
No, this is. No, this is the... That I made orally.
Okay.
Okay. And it was just simply... I'm sorry. Let me clarify that. What I am amending is eight A. On eight A, number one, I'm saying the sentence should end after the word acting commanding officer. We should delete the words on duty. And the only time an INS or border patrol officer should be allowed at the station is if they are being interviewed as a witness or reporting a crime as a victim, because those are things that may happen to them. That was my amendment. That was seconded by Ms. Kowski. I would withdraw the watch commander aspect of it.
On clarification, I will accept as friendly amendments, and therefore included into eight A, the removal of on duty. And I will accept as a friendly amendment unless a witness of a crime or as a victim of a crime.
Right.
But I do not accept as a friendly amendment, and therefore, alas, that it be voted separately, the deletion of the phrase "with respect to a specific identifiable investigation of a federal law violation."
Okay.
So two-thirds of it I'll accept.
All right. Hold on. So the first...
Wait a minute. Ms. Pacheco?
And I accept...
Wait a minute. Wait, wait, wait. The debate is...
I accept as a friendly amendment, the addition of Mr. Holden's inclusions on item two.
Okay. Okay. Now, the first vote will be with respect to the part of Mr. Pacheco's amendment to eight A that Ms. Goldberg did not accept. And that is the phrase "with respect to a specific identifiable investigation of a federal law violation." The second vote will be on item eight A as either amended or not amended. And it will be, in any case, amended by the rest of it, and then this one piece, we'll see what happens with the outcome of the vote. And the third vote will be on item eight as amended by whatever else has passed. Everybody clear on that?
Clear.
Okay. So the first vote...
Please take it out.
Okay. The first vote is on the... Mr. Pacheco's proposed amendment to item eight A, which deletes from the... Which would delete from the last sentence of number one, the phrase "with respect to a specific identifiable investigation of a federal law violation." Open the roll on that... The proposed amendment to delete that phrase.
Hold on.
The last phrase is on point one, "with respect to a specific identifiable investigation of a federal law violation." Mr. Pacheco has moved that that phrase be deleted, has amended... Has moved an amendment to eight A to delete that phrase. He's also moved some other stuff, which Ms. Goldberg accepted. This one is in dispute. So a yes vote is to delete that phrase, and a no vote is to leave it in. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Three ayes, nine noes.
Okay. That was not approved. The other pieces of Mr. Pacheco's amendment to item eight A have been accepted as friendly amendments, and Mr. Holden's... Sorry, I don't have Mr. Holden's in front of me. And Mr. Holden's. So we'll now vote on item eight A as amended by Mr. Holden's suggestion, and the other pieces of Mr. Pacheco's. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That is approved. We now have... Wait, hold on. One more. We now have item eight as amended by all that stuff. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Now it's done. That is approved. Fourth with... Yes. Next item.
Item number nine has two reports on the file.
Mr. Hernandez, were you about to make a motion?
Madam Chair, I move on item number nine, the community redevelopment and housing report. Is that correct?
Yes.
Right. Yeah.
I thought we were moving the housing report.
Yeah, that's the report I'm moving. Community redevelopment and housing.
Well, now, wait a second. There's a CED report, and there's an HCR report. Move HCR.
HCR.
Okay. HCR? Okay.
Yeah.
Mr. Hernandez has moved the housing and community, nine B. Anybody else? All right. Open the roll on item nine B. All right. So we're voting to substitute... Don't we just adopt the communication? But that's okay. Yeah, no, you're right. All right. Okay. So the first motion... First vote is to substitute nine B for the communication. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Now we will vote on that committee report, the HCR, on nine B. Okay. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is also approved. Fourth with on that one, too, please. Next item.
Item number ten.
Item number ten. We had two reports...
Reports on the file. A motion and an amending motion.
Okay. A motion and an amending motion. Hold on here. Right. So we have both of them on the table, and if we just open the roll on this, we get vote... No? Mrs. Walters wants to be here. Yes, you did. So... Well, that's not on my note. I believe you. Go ahead.
Right. I called it special because I wanted to speak. I didn't see the motion I made to not to waive fees included in this. But I certainly want to... My vote to be for disallowing the waiving of fees on this issue. Otherwise, than that, I support the rest of it.
All right. Well, there being no one else who wants to speak, I think what we should do is, let's first vote on ten B, which is your amendment requiring notification.
Right.
Then we'll split the other vote and vote on the waiving of the fees.
Good enough.
And then we'll go for whatever happens after that.
Okay.
So we're gonna vote first... There being no one else who wants to be heard, we'll vote first on item ten B, Mrs. Walters and Mr. Ridley Thomas's amending motion. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay. That is approved. Next vote is gonna be on whether to waive the fees or not, which we are splitting out from ten A.
I think it just went to ten A.
Oh, that's true.
Excuse me. Madam Chair?
Yes. Mr. Wax.
I didn't realize we'd gotten to this. One of the reasons we had continued this, the CO was supposed to make a... CLA was gonna make a report, our CAO, and before we have the vote, could we get that information?
Certainly. Okay. Well, I mean, do you wanna reconsider the vote to amend requiring notice?
No, I'm happy on the vote.
I don't think that'll be...
No, it's not on that, but it's on the issue of...
Of the fees.
Well, more than fee, there were three words. It was all fees, costs, and requirements. And the question were...
Except insurance.
What are those requirements that are...
Okay. So, hold on. We're not on anybody's time here. We're gonna get a report.
Yeah, I just... We held this for a week until the both could report as to what are the fees, costs, and requirements that are going to be waived.
Requirements are essentially the notification of the citizenry around, and you just made a motion to... I think you passed that motion.
Yep. Is that the only requirement that was being waived?
I think so.
The only substantive requirement? And that's taken care of by Ms. Walters?
Having to notify...
Ms. Ridley Thomas... Okay. I didn't... I was concerned that there were other requirements that had fiscal implications that were being involved.
No. Actually, we... It's a... I guess all special events, that's the main requirement that's waived. It's kind of interesting.
Well, I mean...
In some cases, that's...
Usually, there's a contract. There are all kinds of requirements in a contract, and I just wanna make sure that nothing substantive is being waived.
Essentially, the costs are as follows. Fire department, these are estimates. Historically, it has been a three-day event. It's gonna be a two-day event, so it's an estimate.
Okay.
Fire department, $10,000. Street services, $5,000. Police department, $50,000. And $60,000 for transportation, for a total of $125,000.
Do we have a contract with them that requires them to pay that, like we do with the marathon?
No.
So this just goes under each event?
This is just an event.
All right. So those are the costs.
And that essentially is... Most of it is in the park, but there are... It comes out over Figueroa, and they're... Kind of visualize by...
And do we get any income from this?
Not to my knowledge.
I'm just counting.
Do they make a profit on this?
Most likely. I think that's their intent. I know that the first year, they didn't. I haven't followed...
How come, out of curiosity, with the marathon, we have an agreement that specifies...
Well, what happened on the marathon many years ago, we actually... The city actually decided it wanted a marathon.
Mm-hmm.
And we went out to bid.
That's right.
And we looked at three... Actually, three organizations bid. We went through an evaluation process and selected LA Marathon, Inc. as the... And as a contingent... As a part of that process was that there would be an agreement, et cetera, and that agreement obviously has been modified over the years. But that's kind of the generation of that event, is that we actually wanted it, and we to... We actively promoted the idea, went out and solicited people to bid for it, et cetera. In this instance, the promoter happens to be the same individual, but the decided that to put on an event... I think the idea is that it would be comparable to the Long Beach event. But we did not, in the same sense, solicit the bid.
Do you have anything else to add, Mr. Fujio?
No, that's it.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Holden.
Mr. President, members, I was collecting a number of motions introduced by members of the council, and I think I came across one with Mr. Wax, too, but seemed to have disappeared, where you're making requests to provide an exemption for special events. So it's nothing new. It happens all the time, and it's for the good of the people of the city in more ways than one. Just I mentioned earlier about the Academy Awards, which was really substantial every single year, and I'm glad that takes place here in Los Angeles, because there's so many overriding benefits that we derive in terms of tax dollars and jobs, et cetera. Then, of course, Cinco de Mayo, I mean, that goes on for about three or four days. Those special events here, and that's very good also. So in Long Beach this weekend, for the 20th-plus year, I imagine, they're gonna have a auto race down there, and that city booms when that happens. I would hope that this one here would mature to the point where we can have those kind of benefits in terms of revenue for the city as well. So this is a good beginning. Make one other observation. We just voted for a triathlon, and the city is sponsoring it for an individual organization, which I don't have in front of me now, but you're putting up all the money, and I think it's gonna be over $100,000 plus that you're paying out. And also, you'll be tying up city traffic, et cetera. It's gonna be added up to be even more. That triathlon that came through your committee, how much was that that we're paying out? Well, we're gonna give them upfront money.
They're putting up...
No, no, no. We are, to make that happen. Anyway, I would ask for an aye vote on this issue.
Okay. And Mrs. Walters, I think the solution to your problem is, as the clerk suggested, that we vote on item A as amended by your motion B, that you just wanna vote no, because it's basically the motion to waive the fees, costs, and requirements, except that we've added back in the notice. I don't think it needs a separate vote. I think the way you do it is to vote no, because that's the motion to waive the fees. Okay? So we'll now open the roll. Unless anyone else wants to be heard, we're gonna open the roll on item ten A as amended by ten B. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes, one no.
All right. That is approved, and we take note of Mrs. Walters' consistency. Next item.
Item twenty seven.
Fourth with on that, Madam President.
Fourth with. Let me just point out, we have two more items on the regular agenda. We have a special meeting, and we have a closed session, which has several items in it. So keep that in mind. All right. Next item.
Item twenty seven, call special by Councilmember Goldberg.
Ms. Goldberg seems to have disappeared. In that case?
There are two amended amendments.
Oh, dear. All right. Let's...
Chair.
Push the button. Mr. Hernandez.
I think twenty seven was called special for the purpose of two amendments, and I think the department doesn't have a problem with either one. Is that correct?
So you wanna move the amendments?
Yeah, the two amendments. Twenty seven A and twenty seven B.
Anybody else wish to be heard on items twenty seven... Twenty seven A or twenty seven B? All right. Let's... Do we need to vote on those amendments separately?
I think we're just gonna assume that...
Well, unless there's an objection... Is there any objection to either of the amendments? Seeing none, we're gonna deem those incorporated and vote on twenty seven as amended by twenty seven A and twenty seven B. Open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved.
Fourth with me.
Fourth with on that one as well. Very efficient. Next item.
Item thirty-one, call special by Councilmember Sbornich, although he is gone.
Who was also left. Mr. Wax, what do you know?
Yeah, I think he got his question answered, but there's an amendment in there. The department wrote this, and now they've said that they needed to change the wording on two, so there's a substitute. There should be a thirty-one A. So I would move you do that, and I think it changes an account number.
All right. Just so we're sure what we're voting on. So it's... We're gonna take thirty-one A instead of thirty-one, and open the roll on item thirty-one A. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
That is approved. Okay. Now, I need some help from the council members here. We have a closed session, we have a special meeting, and we have public comment.
We should cover the special meeting?
It's gonna go on for hours. Are the closed session items, items we need to do today?
It would be better if we lose a quorum, or if the council's desire is not to hear them today. We could do them on Friday, but we are on very short pay period, and also, one of them, the attorney will have to go back to court to get more time.
All right, well, we're down to 11 members now, so if we can do them quickly, I think it might be useful to get them done.
I'll call my people and get them down immediately.
Why don't you get them down here, and let's do public comment in the meantime, and then we'll move on to the special meeting when that's over. All right, so this is the time for comment by members of the public on items not on today's agenda, and we have a 10-minute time period, and we have, so far, four people who want to be heard, so please time yourselves accordingly. We'll begin with Harriet Bilford, to be followed by Larry Ross, and then Gracie Gray, and then Ruth Sarnoff.
Hi, as I stated earlier, my firm, my law firm represents GLAMA, the Greater Los Angeles Hotel Motel Association, with about 1,000 members. And on behalf of GLAMA and my own firm, I'm here to request the appointment of an independent investigator. I need to emphasize first, I've been before you many times about the issues with the police, but I need to emphasize that I strongly support our police department. I always have, but the last six years, I've learned a lot of disturbing things about some officers who lie, who abuse, who harass, and, you know, the funny thing is, is a few years ago, or even a year ago, I couldn't say this for fear of offending all of you, but I guess the climate is politically correct now, where you can reveal these things, and I can, and other people can, where there's a code of silence that prevented us all from doing that. You know, again, for the last far six years, I've submitted complaints. They've been conveyed to two Police Commission Executive Directors, three Commission Presidents, two Chiefs of Police, and two Inspector Generals with little, if any, success. And rather than holding these police officers accountable, as they say they're going to do, most of the times, they've been transferred or even promoted. That has happened so many times, I can't tell you. Our attempts to administratively address complaints have been an effort in futility. In a March 24 letter that I received from Mr. Eglash, the Inspector General, he informed me, and I quote, "Given the importance of the Rampart corruption matter to the Police Commission and the limited resources of this office," he regretted that "the Office of the Inspector General was unable to initiate an investigation into my concerns." I guess that, right now, they're just concerned with Rampart and not the day-to-day things that go on. I've also learned, and you might want to ask the Commission this, I asked them last night, and they kind of gave me a wishy-washy answer, but I've also learned that the city attorney reviews reports of misconduct before they're become, made public. And of course, they have a conflict of interest, since they're the ones that defend these people that are being investigated. I know in my personal experience is, we've had reports where I've gotten drafts of the reports, and the final copy has, the majority of the admissions have been taken out when it reveals police misconduct.
Ms. Bilford, I'm gonna have to ask you to wrap up, because I want to give the other people a chance as well.
I'll just wrap up, that people employed by the city to investigate these complaints, as well as the victims, have told me they can't reveal the truth for fear of retaliation, for fear of losing their jobs.
Okay, thank you.
I'm just gonna, again, reiterate that we need an independent investigator.
Right, thank you. Larry Ross is next.
So let me begin what I left off from my last visit here. The following are only a few of the criminal activities of the law-defiant perpetrators who have come to be identified by the destination of Clans County or County Clans. The destination is all embracing to include all the instigators and the perpetrators who have participated in this conspiracy against my sons, my family, and I. Intentional being exposed to the harsh weather or environment, intentional trying to induce stress and mental anguish or trauma, intentional trying to destroy the quality of life or health, the intentional subjected to natural and artificial created cold environments, intentional and continuous efforts to cause defibrillations and permanent damages, intentional and internally-induced bleeding or mayhem caused by means of their tours or playthings, the government sanctioned the selling of defective products to me, the government sanctioned the selling of dangerous defective products, fraud, the government sanctioned the spying and the dissemination of the inflammatory materials or lies against me, the government sanctioned the infringements or encroachments upon the ideas, works, and projects, which I refer to as being operation wait-and-take, because that is exactly what they do. They wait until I come up with an idea, then they snatch it away. It's a famous expression of theirs. The government sanctioned the intentional design to destroy a damage to speaking and singing voices of mine, and the list of abuses and violations goes on and on and on and on and on. All the above, the U.S. Supreme Court has original jurisdiction. There's no one above the law, not that body even. So who are the ones who would stand or sit with the audacity and say what the outcome of the matter will be before it being heard by the proper body?
Okay, thank you, Mr. Ross.
I'm summing up.
No, I know, but I've got two more people who want to be heard, and I want to give them a chance.
Or let me word it, before the authorized proper body has had the opportunity to hear. When you don't give a person enough time to speak, it's equivalent of not allowing that person to speak at all.
Well, Mr. Ross, I.
Which would be in violation of that person constitutional right to be heard.
I'm always happy to hear you, but I think it's important to share with the other people who want to be heard. Gracie Gray is next. Thank you very much. Gracie Gray is next, to be followed by Ruth Sarnoff. And Mrs. Gray, I'm gonna remind you too, that there's somebody who wants to be, who wants to speak after you, so we have to save some time for her as well. Go ahead.
I understand that, and I respect that. I'm thinking about learning to speak Spanish, because it seems if they get over very fast. Good afternoon. I'm here again, and there's something that I would like to relate to you. Once upon a time, there was a man, a poor, very poor man, he passed away. Then the rich one, he also passed away. The poor man was in the bosom of God. The rich man was burning in pure D hell. And the rich man asked God to let the poor man wet his tongue. God told him, "No, you have your lot in full." Now, I'm saying that to say this. I have came down here numerous a time, I noticed that man while he was speaking, there was hardly any concern, or even paying any attention to him. If you remember, I got hit by a car by two Lantino guys, very drunk. The police made up a bad report. There's a law that they should have insurance. They had no insurance. I had a head injury. I never got anything. Christmas, I had nothing. I turned 66 Sunday, I got nothing. It is a shame how the black woman is being persecuted here in the state of California, there being shot down. You don't hear anything about the Lantino or the white woman. I am tired of it. Believe me or not, I'm tired of it. Now, getting back on the Immigration Act, you know, God was the first one to deport somebody, when he deported Cain from the land. And in Romans, it said, "Let every soul be a subjection to the authorities, because they rule not in the good deed, but into the bad deed." And I don't want to be running off with scriptures, because some ministers might not tell their people this, because sometime, people are hurt behind illegal immigrants. I don't care anything about them coming into the country, that is their thing. But I have a son named Felipe, and his son's name is Juan, and believe me or not, they have been chopped up because their identity has been used. Thank you all very much, and I would like for you to especially look into the allegation about the accident that I had.
Thank you, Mrs. Gray. Ruth Sarnoff.
Thank you for this opportunity. I just wanted to bring to the council's attention, I'm sure it's something that you've all thought a bit about, and so it won't be something new, but I was thinking about all the different police jurisdictions we have here in Southern California, and the many ways in which people in the LA Basin interact with officers from varying cities. I think that it's not unfair to say that many of the patterns that have existed and are coming to light now in, in relationship to the LAPD are also problems in many other jurisdictions and other cities in Southern California. And I would hope that, in some way, the learning and the experience of what this council's going through would be being shared with other jurisdictions, and with county, and with other, others who would benefit by the processes that you're going through. I would like to take this opportunity, since I didn't have an opportunity to speak under the earlier agenda item, my support for the actions that you've taken today. I hope it'll be a model for, for other communities. I think that there are some outstanding practices in other Southern California cities that perhaps haven't had a smoking gun kind of situation that's brought everyone's attention to it, but there are practices that have been discontinued by LAPD, such as hogtying, which other cities still practice here in Southern California. I think it's important that your actions and your reports and the work that you do be shared with other jurisdictions and be learned from. And I thank you for this opportunity. I'm a Santa Monica resident, and I've lived extends for about 10 years in Culver City, and I've lived in a number of other LA communities for about 50 years. So I, I think this is not just an LAPD issue, and I hope that this opportunity, while both local and international spotlight is on LAPD, that we encourage other jurisdictions to look at what's happening in their cities. Thank you.
Thank you. That closes the public comment period, and we'll move to the next item, which I believe is our, can you guys hang on, let us do the closed session, then we will get that over with, and we'll be, I don't know who's doing the report for the special meeting, but if you, they promised me this'll be quick. And what I'm worried about is that I think yours may not be quick. If you think yours will be quick, I'll take yours first.
But then we need to clear the room.
Yeah, let's, let's clear the room, and don't, those of you who want to come back, the chief can stay here. Those who want to come back, don't go far. So we're gonna go into executive session, and I hope we'll be done with it quickly.
In the amount of $85,000 in the case of Doris Murray versus City of Los Angeles, et al.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is approved, fourth with on that item. Next item.
Item 40D, settlement in the case of Evelyn White, et al. versus City of LA, et al., in the amount of $350,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
10 ayes.
That is also approved, fourth with on that item, please. Next.
Item 41, in the case of estate of Jaime Herique versus City of LA, settlement in the amount of $290,000.
Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
9 ayes, 1 no.
That is also approved, and fourth with on that too, please. And that, I believe, completes our agenda on the regular meeting, so we're gonna recess the regular meeting and call to order the special meeting, which you should all have a notice on your desk. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Brenson, Chick, Fear, Glanter, Goldberg, Hernandez, Holden, Miskowski, Pacheco, Padilla, Lee, Thomas, Sbornich, Wax, Walters, Ferraro, 10 members present in the quorum. Madam President.
All right, thank you. We have just one item, which is a report, a presentation by the police department relative to the process and procedures for promotion, discipline, and tracking of officers and related issues. Ms. Miskowski, you want to go first, or you want to?
Yes, I do. I also think the city attorney wants to caution us. This came about as a motion that I made last week in executive session, but asking for a public discussion, and I think Mr. Wax concurred in that and actually raised the issue, in general, and I think that that's the point I want to make, that this is to be a general discussion, not specifically talking about any individual officers, but looking at norms, looking at how the department accounts for certain things. And I would like to ask the department, we have Chief Davis here and Commander Calipaz, we have heard some of the issues in the past, and we've all read the Board of Inquiry report, but beyond that, in looking at some details, in terms of when and how, issues as they might appear in an officer's file, relative to complaints made, type of complaints made, relative to adjudication of them, how that is utilized in consideration in an early warning system to the department, that there may be some issues to discuss with the officer relative to training, relative to the adequacy of that person being an officer, and relative to the department's consideration of promotion, and whether or not that does factor in. I think those are the issues that came up, and we had a very detailed discussion, but didn't have any answers, because the department wasn't able to be responsive in that manner. So I think we would like to have a discussion, and I'm sure there's gonna be many questions here, looking at, is there a tracking of sort of averages? What or when do certain things occur in any particular officer that start to create that warning? Is, if there are a lot of complaints made, but all of the complaints are judged to be unfounded, does that mean anything? Or does it mean just because there are that many particular complaints with an officer, that even if they're unfounded individually, that they're showing a pattern that is of some concern? The question of graduated complaints, a complaint first on discourtesy, elevating to a complaint on use of force. And so I think we had a lot of specifics, and I know that we're gonna get the tracking system in and the risk management systems, but before that and beyond that, right now, the department is making promotions, and the department is making judgments, and we'd like some very specific analysis of how you look at an officer's complaint file in terms of those kinds of considerations. And I think those are the issues we want to discuss in general, and would ask for some elaboration from the department.
Before you do that, however, Ms. Goldberg wants to be heard as well, and then we can do all of them.
Madam Chair, before we, before the council starts, I would just really like to emphasize that this is a general discussion, that neither cases nor names should be mentioned in this discussion, that this is just for processes and procedures that the, that the police commission, or that the police department will address. And I'm asking the council members to be very careful in not bringing up names or cases.
Fair enough, and, and by all means, stop us if, if we do something bad here. All right, Ms. Goldberg.
Do I have a question?
All right, fine. Then, in that case, you're on.
Okay, good afternoon. I will speak to the risk management part of your question, and Commander Calipaz will deal with the promotional process within the department. Speaking to the risk management aspects of the department, which really addresses all of the things that you're talking about, or that you raised, the issues that you raised, it has several levels. The first level is, is at the area, or the station house level. And at that level, the various risk issues that are looked at and tracked are pursuits, use of force, grievances, complaints, civil litigation, and traffic accidents. And what that tracking process entails is not a, a, a look at how many, in the sense that whether there is a certain number that causes the officer to be reviewed because of a certain number, but the entire personnel performance of the officer is looked at, and from that holistic approach, there's an assessment made by that commanding officer, whether or not there's some intervention needed. And that intervention can take many forms. It could take the form of training, it could take the form of reassignment, but it is not a disciplinary process, it's a process for intervention. Above that, the Bureau has a very similar process, in which they look at the entire Bureau, and they look at it for the very same, in the very same areas, the areas of pursuits, use of force, grievances, and so forth. They also look to see whether or not there are units within the department, watches within the department, that have any patterns of conduct that they should be concerned about. And so, just from the Bureau and the area perspective, those things are monitored, and they're generally monitored on a quarterly basis. And from a department perspective, we have what's called the Risk Management Executive Committee, and that's a committee in which I chair. And that committee also looks at the areas that I just indicated. But before we do that, we have what's called a personnel profile developed on the individual officer that may come to our attention, and they come to the attention of the Risk Management Executive Committee by a variety of means. They can be referred for review by the concerned commanding officer in an area, they can be referred to, for review by commanding officer at the Bureau, the chief of police. Also, while he reviews discipline, he may make a note of a, an officer that he feels would, needs to be reviewed more closely at the risk management level. The civil service, I'm sorry, the police commission, during their review of items that come before them that involve some personnel complaint and performance review, they may also identify an officer in what they feel should be referred to the Risk Management Review Committee, Executive Committee, for a more in-depth look. And so there's a variety of places in which an officer could be referred to the Risk Management Executive Committee. It is the civil, or the police division, which we come before you quite a bit, and as you're well aware, on various lawsuit, civil litigation issues. We also look at civil litigation and the issues involved in civil litigation, the officers who are the subject of the lawsuits and their personnel histories, to make a determination as to whether or not they should be referred to the Risk Management Executive Committee. And so, again, there's a variety of places within the department in which we review the conduct of officers, the performance of officers, and from that review results in their referral to a Risk Management Executive Committee. What the Risk Management Executive Committee does is do, they have a detailed look at the officer. And again, the purpose of the look is not for discipline, it's for intervention, to change what may appear to be a pattern of behavior that has significant risks to the city in terms of financial risks, not only that, but it also reflects the quality of service that it may be providing to the community. And so our referral, our recommendations will include, to the chief of police, a reassignment. It may include taking them out of the public, and for instance, they may be working patrol. It may include a recommendation that they not work patrol. It also includes referral to our behavioral science section. And so, again, there's a variety of things that we do in the, in the area of risk management to identify and track employees who may be a risk to the city. Now, also included in those recommendations is a period in which we go back and review that particular officer, in terms of how is that officer performing now? We've looked at them. We've looked at them, generally, the first review is a 60 days, and then we look at, generally require a six-month review after that. How is that officer performing now? Is there any other intervention that needs to be considered? So, again, in terms of the layers of review, it is quite extensive. It is not as complete as we would like it, however. And you mentioned teams too, and that's where we're going with the more extensive review because there's some recommendations that we have made and that we will make in the future systems that come about that will automate all of this. What we're looking at now primarily is a hand system in which a lot of this information is gathered and analyzed and recommendations are developed from that information. So, it is a very labor-intensive process, but we have been very, very active in it. We meet once a month, the Risk Management Executive Committee meets once a month, and generally, we review three to four officers at a meeting.
Chief, the one thing I would like to ask in terms of that overview, and I appreciate that, is you used a couple of times, when you see a pattern occurring, you react and cause intervention or look at it with all the specification you talked about. What constitutes a pattern? If you don't have a specific numerical number that constitutes a pattern, then what is constituting a pattern and how is it conveyed throughout the department consistently as to what is a pattern? Is, again, is an officer with a relatively low number potentially problematic or not? Or do you let a few accumulate before you consider it as a pattern? And how do you specifically respond to that? And then I'd like to hear from Commander Calipaz, because although it may be hard, as you've indicated, to go through a lot of this stuff by hand, it seems to me when a promotion is going to occur that at least someone is looking at a file of each individual officer, so it's not a question of having to assemble information, that officer and his or her file is going to be in front of those looking at and reviewing any particular officer for promotion. So I think the promotions side would be important. But the question is, how, what constitutes a pattern?
Pattern primarily, and again, we don't look at numbers, but pattern primarily is some consistency in the way an officer reacts to a variety of situations. For instance, we may have an officer who is faced with certain kinds of situations in the field that reacts with a certain kind of force all of the time. And that may be of concern to us. It may not necessarily rise to misconduct, but it may rise to an area in which we should refer the officer to training in order to get a different way to approach the situation and so that it doesn't resort in the use of force. There may be a situation involving a pursuit. An officer may be involved in several pursuits that are, that were initiated based upon certain kinds of things that he may have, he or she may have observed, which may have been, could have been handled in a different way. And so, when we talk about patterns, we're talking about really a consistent way that an officer, over various kinds of police activities, approaches a situation. We have recently looked at officers who appear to be very inflexible in approaching a situation. We may be looking at, a citation may result in a complaint that may reflect that. We may be looking at a use of force in another area on the same officer that may reflect that. And the same thing may jump up at us as we look at that officer, is that they seem not to be flexible in a given situation. And so we would make recommendations on that. So, we have specifically tried to stay away from the number issue because, as you know, generally speaking, numbers become subjective and it's very difficult to explain why did you pick number three versus number four?
Ms. Goldberg.
A civilian comes in and makes a complaint, an investigation takes place. What are the various results of that going to be? I mean, they can find out that, yes, we agree with the complaint, no, it's unfounded. What are the other possibilities?
It can be sustained, it can be not, sustained means it happened. And not resolved means you can't determine whether it happened or not. It can be exonerated, it means that it happened, but the officer was justified. It fell within the policy guidelines. It could be unfounded, which means that it did not happen. So those are the four categories of classification.
Is it true or not true that a fair amount are found to be not resolved?
Yes, it is, excuse me, yes, it is true.
I think probably nothing at the moment irritates people who call my office. They'd almost rather it be found unfounded than not resolved. And I think what they're saying, and I just want to get your comments, because I don't, I don't really know, I mean, I understand all sides of this. This is a tough situation. But what they say to me is this, these are police officers who are trained investigators who are looking into my complaint. They may not put it quite this way, but it's the essence of their argument. These are trained people who are investigators, who are looking at this complaint. They've heard all sides of it, and like a jury, shouldn't they make a finding one way or the other of which is most credible? And they say, you know, I'm called to jury duty without being an investigator, without any of this training, and asked to make a finding of, well, beyond a reasonable doubt. Obviously, not 100% anybody, but, and that's, I just have to express to you that if I get complaints about the complaint process, it's not even the unfounded, which you think they might complain about. It's this unresolved category, and they really don't understand. I wish you'd explain to me and so I could explain to them, how we can continually have a lot of these be unresolved. That's for them very unsatisfying, and I'd like to hear your comments on that.
Well, just a little history, I'm sure you recall the discussion on the not sustained versus sustained, which is really the same discussion as relates to not resolved. It's a very difficult question to really respond to. How do you move the not resolved either into sustained or to unfounded? What we have done to try to get a clear understanding as to what occurred is we, as you probably, just back up just a little bit, as you probably recall, there was a time when we did not weigh the fresh complaint witness in determining credibility. And there was a time when we did not do some other things that we are currently doing. So in an effort to move the question from not resolved to one of the other categories, we have really stressed the importance of fresh complaint witnesses to try to resolve the question. But I don't have an answer for you as to how we take it even further because at present, we do a very extensive effort to try to find out whether there's other persons who may have heard about this situation from either this individual who's making the complaint or from a person that this complainant told to try to judge credibility. And it's a very untenable situation. Because when you have two people in a room, one person said it happened, the other said it didn't, how do you resolve that? And that's kind of what we're talking about.
Well, but their argument to me is, you have a jury trial, and one person said, "I saw him do it," and the other person said, "You didn't really see me." And the answer to that is, you decide who's more credible, who has a reason to lie, who does not, you know, all those things. That's, that's why there's an irritation, I think.
Okay, push your button again if you want to talk some more. Mr. Hernandez is up next.
I have one other question, I'll have to wait.
So, if a citizen files a complaint on a police officer, and who reviews that complaint? The commander of the division, the watch commander?
The complaint is viewed at several levels.
Every complaint?
Every complaint.
Every complaint.
Is reviewed first at the commander level. The commander makes a recommendation that, to the Chief of Police, as to how it should be resolved. But that complaint is then reviewed at the Bureau level. The Bureau being a deputy chief, it is reviewed, and if that deputy chief agrees, they sign or endorse that complaint and it moves to the next level. If that deputy chief disagrees, then it's what's called a military endorsement is made, expressing the view of that deputy chief, and then it is moved forward to Internal Affairs where it is reviewed again to see whether or not there's information or in that report to support the recommended findings. If it's a sustained complaint, it goes to the Chief of Police.
What if it's unfounded?
Unfounded report goes through the same level of review, and then it's reviewed at Internal Affairs Division. Unless Internal Affairs Division sees some discrepancies based on what is being recommended and as it relates, and in the evidence in the report, they then review and then file it. If it is, if they disagree with it, it's...
Okay, you're giving me the same answer. Now, the next week, I get another complaint, and maybe the next month, I get another one, and then next quarter, I get another one. When does someone start wondering, and being that you said that numbers are subjective, when do you start wondering if there's a pattern?
Well, two things. I think we have to keep the state law in mind when we talk about unfounded complaints. State law says that we can't use unfounded complaints for discipline or personnel selections. But in our review of, in the risk management, from a risk management's perspective, we look at all complaints because they can be used for training purposes. And so we do look at all of that as we try to make, get some understanding as to whether there's some issues with the performance of an officer. So it is reviewed, but again, I think a police officer...
I'm trying to find out when. See, I'm trying to get an understanding, when do you deem a problem or something you should be looking at to work on? What, and what we've heard in the past is that, for example, you look at each one in an isolated situation, so you don't have the opportunity to really look for pattern.
Well, in, again, going back to risk management, we don't look at them in isolation. We look at them as a pool. For instance, we may look at use of force, personnel complaints, all of that stuff to see whether or not there is some consistency in the way an officer approaches the various situations in the field that require some intervention. But as it relates to...
Yeah, let me ask you this question. Risk management, you stated that you review three or four cases a month?
Yes, officers, yes.
Yeah, three or four officers a month. Over a period of a year, that's 48 officers?
Well, and we, Risk Management began, Risk Management Executive Committee was formed last year, about January or so. And so during that period, we've reviewed 19 officers. And the number of officers that we review really is contingent upon the number that's referred to us. But if we, and so if we reviewed three or four officers each in every meeting, the number would be as you indicated. We are currently reviewing three or four officers a meeting, yes.
Mm-hmm.
Push the button again. Mrs. Check.
Yeah, I think part of that explanation, Chief Davis, was going to my question. Because when there are a series of complaints, and let's say many of them are in the same category, discourtesy, unnecessary use of force, 10, 11 complaints, all unfounded, is that the kind of record somewhere, maybe even before we get to number 11, where that officer would either be getting a little bit extra scrutiny from a supervisor and/or very focused training? You know, I was dismayed to hear what I already know, that all of this is manual. And so, it seems like there would also be a really significant time lag even before a supervising, a command officer would start to have that information.
You know, the, and that, the answer to your initial question is yes. We do look at all of those complaints regardless of the classification in the risk management part of our review. Not as it relates to discipline, though, because again, state law limits it, yeah.
Right, no, I understand that.
But the, there is a time lag on the information we receive. The manual part of the process is bringing information from one system and putting it with the information from another system. We do have those log-on kinds of systems where we can, you know, print out, for instance, how many uses of force occurred between June and July of 99. We could print that out.
For an officer?
For an officer. But how does that compare, because you have to compare it with what's going on throughout the department, what does that really mean? But going back to your, the scope of your question, it really goes to, how do we use that information when we have a trail of, and we're really talking about unfounded and exonerated, that's what we're talking about.
Exactly, where officers have not been found guilty.
Exactly. What, what that information is used for is to, again, assess whether or not there's a need for this officer to receive some kind of intervention, which could be training, could be referral to BSS, and things like that. So we do use it in the risk management portions of our review. And it's used at the divisional level with the captain. It's used, again, at the Bureau level as they look at, again, what's going on in the Bureau. And it is even more, looked at in more detail at the Risk Management Executive Committee. And we have referred officers for a variety of things based upon the entire scope of what their employment record shows, which would include some exonerated and unfounded complaints.
Okay, Mrs. Walters.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Chief, from time to time, when we get cases through that, where there's litigation, and I've raised the question about the history of the officer involved. And there've been instances where just a quick glance at what the officer's been involved in in the past would say that this is a candidate for trouble. Is reviewing these candidates' packets, as you folks call it, something new that you've just started when they come up for promotion or assignment? Or has that been going on for some time?
Well, I'll leave the promotion part of the question to Commander Calipaz, but the, the risk management approach to looking at the things that you're referring to is something that, when I went to West, South Bureau in 97, it was something was being done by various Bureau commanding officers throughout the department in terms of just the risk management parts of it. The formalized process that I'm referring to now, in which we have a Risk Management Executive Committee, began last year, first part of last year. But, in which we pull out the information that we refer, that comes in lawsuits, for instance. That's one of the categories we look at. And we're finding, and this is a group of, some things I looked at yesterday that identified some officers that we're going to refer over to the Risk Management Committee to look at them. So we're looking at everything that comes before us as it relates to, where it has something to do with an officer's performance. That information, if it reflects what, in our view, a pattern of conduct that requires a more extensive look, we're referring it to the Risk Management Executive Committee for review, and that is happening. And you're right, you have made some comments about some people who have been referred. I think one involved a traffic, a pattern of traffic accidents, for instance, where we looked at that and referred them to the Risk Management Committee. The process, if I just might go a little further, the process requires when we refer them, though, to the Risk Management Committee, that we develop an entire profile of the officer, which would include the categories I commented on, but include commendations, include their personnel evaluations, it includes all of that. And so when the Risk Management Executive Committee gets that information, they have everything they need to make some assessment.
And very quickly, because my time is about up, but some of those that I've had the opportunity to see as a result of the litigation, it looks like the person who's just walking around signing on them, "I am troubled." And yet, nothing was done. In the, in terms of promotions, is the officer's packet reviewed in terms of their history on the job since they've been there? Of complaints, of citations, of Board of Inquiry, all of those things? Are they reviewed when a person is up for promotion? When Ms. Goldberg and I were at the school district, we found that people were being promoted without any look at their prior history or complaints that had been received. And I'd like to know, what is the case here?
Right, Commander Betty Calipaz, Commanding Officer Personnel Group. I'll, I'll talk to you about the promotional, and actually more or less the advanced pay grade process as well. For a point of clarification, we have the Civil Service Promotion Process where you go from police officer to sergeant to lieutenant to captain. And in all those processes, their package is reviewed as part of the, as part of the selection. And the one we, I know you're concerned about, there was an issue of an advanced pay grade. And that's where you go from a police officer two to a police officer three to a police officer three plus one. I'll go into quite depth on that since that might help you out with some of the questions that you have.
The, the questions that I have aren't that complicated. Are the, everybody, when they come up for a promotion, are their packets reviewed for their work history?
Absolutely, they're reviewed not only for their work history, but they're reviewed for... They're reviewed not only for their work history, but they're reviewed for their disciplinary history as well. However-
Well, I include that in their work history.
That's right. First off, they have to meet eligibility requirements. Then in the written test, it's obviously pass/fail. The oral interview part and the part where they're assessed by a panel of individuals to promote them looks at a number of categories, including their team's record. And the teams, for the first part of the promotional process, in order to get into an eligibility pool of either unsatisfactory, satisfactory, excellent, or outstanding, we may only review sustained or guilty allegations in that process. Once that individual's been put into a pool and the selection is being made from that pool of candidates, then that individual, we can look at any pending personnel complaints or not resolved complaints. And at that point, we look at a pattern of conduct that we had discussed before. We look at things, behaviors, that would be inconsistent with that position.
But you don't look at resolved complaints? You don't-
Yes, we look at sustained complaints and guilty at the disciplinary, at the first part, but we looked at not resolved, pending complaints, and also sustained and guilty in the final selection process.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Ms. Goldberg.
The police officer's bill of rights on a statewide level makes a framework for all of this. Is that true?
Yes, it is.
Would you describe some of the things that you can and cannot do under that? The reason I ask that is when I first got into this in personnel, I had no idea that we had the kind of state involvement in this matter that we do. And I'm not sure everybody here knows that as well. The other question I have is, goes to the question of a review at an evaluation time and how often officers are routinely evaluated and what the evaluation instrument is like. Because here again is an opportunity, you know, most people think in terms of discipline only, and I'm happy to hear you use words intervention because it's not always a matter of discipline. A lot of times, it's a matter of poor training or forgotten training, or it's too far away, or they learned new techniques since they left the academy and on and on and on. But what are the various ways that officers are evaluated? And what kinds of things flow out of those evaluation? And how often does it happen? And by whom does it happen? Leaving aside promotion and leaving aside disciplinary hearings for a moment.
I'll respond first to the state intervention on this issue. There's Assembly Bill 301, which is police officer's bill of rights, which prohibits anyone from using unfounded or not resolved complaints in the promotional process, except as I otherwise stated, once we get to the outstanding pool category. In addition, it also prevents us from using unfounded in the disciplinary process because it's as if it did not happen. When you talk about some other things that have happened recently, there has been recent legislation that has also required us therefore to redact information from the complaints that even refer to not resolved and or unfounded in the officer's package. So we are in the process of dealing with the legislature on that issue because it's a very burdensome, cumbersome process to go through each personnel complaint, redact all that information if there is one sustained. So we have to actually make a decision of whether or not that complaint is mostly a sustained complaint or mostly an unfounded and not resolved, and make some determination of what we leave in their package and what we don't. It's extremely difficult and we are actually, the legislature is going to require us to go back quite a distance to do that so it's not in an officer's package. That's the guidelines we're operating under and it makes it difficult for us to look at some of the issues legally that we would like to look at in some situations. As far as the evaluation process, it's a yearly process for all employees. And we have a schedule that's in our manuals that indicates when sergeants and detectives and lieutenants and everyone gets evaluated. That evaluation is conducted by their direct report. In my situation, my commanding officer, which is Chief Davis, would conduct my evaluation, prepare my evaluations. There is a review process where the review, the supervisor of that individual reviews the rating report to make sure that it's sufficient for that individual. And in that rating report, we're not just looking at their conduct in the area of whether or not they work as a team, or their productivity, or a number of other issues which are part of our personnel evaluation. But we also look, have a part of the evaluation that indicates whatever discipline has occurred during that rating period that has been sustained or any comment, commendations that have done. And that is also placed on the package. That, once it's reviewed by the reviewing authority, then it is, you sit down with the officer and you serve that officer with their rating report and you discuss the evaluation and tell them why they got, what they got in the certain areas. And that includes the discipline that's been included on the rating report. So I hope that's answered your questions. It's done on a yearly basis and it is part of a process of regularly looking at the officer, looking at all the information about their pattern of conducts, their risk management, and talking to them in depth about the issues.
Does, the part you left out was the last part of my question, which was, does any action ensue out of that evaluation other than simply to inform them and they agree that that's the evaluation? Can a person say, "I've here, I've reviewed your evaluation. You're strong here, you're weak there, you're strong there, you're weak there. I want you between now and your next evaluation to work on these, these three things, to take these training seminars, to get this additional, and I'll evaluate you next year as to whether or not you completed this corrective program."
Hopefully that does occur. I know with very proactive supervisors, that does occur and it should be occurring on a regular basis. One of the things we realize in our evaluation process is it's a little impotent in that area. And that is one of the things we're looking at, as we're reviewing the evaluation process, we're actually doing a complete rework of our personnel evaluation process that has been actually to the chief a couple of times and back to us for recommendations. But that part, the missing part, is sitting down with the person and saying, "These are the goals we have for you for future evaluations and when we evaluate you next time, this is what we will be looking at." And that is part of the process that we're putting together right now. It is not completely in place, but it is certainly in place at the command level.
If I can just add, just a comment to that. The, a person who is rated, for instance, as satisfactory or borderline satisfactory can be reassigned from the current position that they have. And so the evaluation serves not only the purpose of telling the person what level of performance that they are, but it also serves to provide a vehicle for moving a person from a certain assignment if they're not performing at the level that they should be.
And if I could make one final comment, as you notice in the board of inquiry report, recommendation number 15 talks about that we must restore the integrity to our performance evaluation process as well. And that's part of the whole system was, is even whether or not people are getting better ratings than they should get in the first place. And that's the restoring the integrity and making it actually something that is useful.
This is always difficult.
Yes.
But the direction to improve in areas of weaknesses, in my personal view, absolutely critical. And it is in almost every evaluation system, the weak link. We do not either make the recommendations or if we make them, we don't follow up and see that they were followed. And nobody tries to do a bad job. You don't sign on to be a terrible officer. So if you have weak areas and they're identified in the evaluation, you do them a favor insisting that they get training or they get help to do that. And I think we just need to do a lot more of it, not just here, but in all our departments.
Agreed.
Ms. Misakowski.
Thank you. I really appreciate the discussion, particularly the reinforcement of the disturbing news. And I think that many of us have raised that when we hear information about any particular officer and have an awful lot of either unresolved, well, generally unresolved complaints, that those are issues that cannot be taken into consideration on promotion. So it seems counterintuitive. But I also, it struck me that as I was particularly hearing Councilmember Goldberg talk about asking you to really push those cases that are marked unresolved to resolution, that perhaps we really should discuss an alternative. And that is where it is unresolved, it's really saying that there is probably, there are probably two people. One saying, one an officer saying one thing and the other, a witness saying something else, or the person who's making the accusation. And unresolved is closer to essentially a hung jury, which is basically saying that either the, or the jury is still out, that there is not enough evidence to either dismiss or to say that it was founded. And if we change the characterization of it, along with the change probably through an MOU and probably through state law, it really is, should be given more weight than dismissed. And that's essentially what you're saying, that at least relative to promotion, it is dismissed, when in fact, it has more weight than that. It has, has weight of saying that we, the department, are not able to clear it. And we, the department, are acknowledging that there may only be two people who are participating. But if we, if we look at restructuring it, renaming it, re-explaining it as something that we were not able to just say that this is resolved, because it is unresolved based on contradictory, conflicting testimony, one involving our officer and one involving, you know, someone else or maybe other officers, that it really should have weight and should not be able to be, in fact, as you now say, redacted even and eliminated from the jackets. That's even more troubling to me, that these kinds of cases are going to arguably disappear when in fact, they clearly should not. And I think that the department is handling them as well as you can, but we've got to create a category where they are not lost.
You know, I can just clarify something. The not resolves are considered. It's part of a pattern of conduct. What's not considered is the unfounded and the, the unfounded and the exonerated are not considered.
Okay.
And the logic behind that is the, unfounded is saying that the incident didn't occur.
Okay. I misunderstood. I thought the unresolved were also discounted. Is that also true in promotions that unfounded can or cannot be considered?
Unfounded cannot be considered.
Cannot be considered.
Cannot be considered. But not resolves can be considered.
Not resolved can be considered.
And that's the second part of the phase that Commander Kellipas was referring to. During the first part, when you just have everybody come and you're going to put them in the various categories based upon their performance through the process, you only look at the sustained complaints. Once everybody is in the various categories, excellent, outstanding, all the way satisfactory and unsatisfactory, then when you're going to make a selection, you can go back and include the not resolves in that review.
Right. I didn't want those lost because it seemed to me that those were factors that should be considered.
All right. Anybody else in that case? Seeing none, I want to thank you both for your time and your patience in waiting for us to get to this special meeting. And I believe there being no other business on the agenda for special meeting, we are now adjourned from the special meeting and will resume the regular council meeting. And I believe all we have is cleanup here. So what's the next item?
Motion for posting a referral?
Without objection, so ordered.
Yeah. Council has excuses on the desk. Councilmember Goldberg requests to be excused Friday, April 14th to leave at 11:30 city business. I need some motion.
That needs a motion. Ms. Misakowski moves. Mr. Hernandez seconds.
Councilmember Pacheco requests to be excused city business Friday, May 19th meets council policy.
Okay. That'll be the order.
Councilmember Walter requests to be excused Friday, April 28th. City business meets council policy.
That'll be the order.
Councilmember Misakowski requests to be excused April 18th and 19th to leave at 11:30 city business meets council policy.
So ordered. Do you have me for the 18th city business? Maybe not yet. Yes. Okay. Thank you. All right. Next item. That clears the desk. All right. Do we have any adjourning motions? Apparently we do. Everybody please rise for adjourning motions. Ms. Goldberg.
Yes, I just want to, if you haven't already done it, to adjourn in memory of Bill Keen.
Yeah, we did.
Oh, you did that? Okay.
I'm happy to say I had the honor.
I'd like to join you on that.
I think we put everybody on it.
Okay.
By all means. Anybody else? Mr. Wax.
Yes, I'd just like the council to adjourn in memory of a very dear cousin of mine, Diana Lustig, who is, died at a very, she lived a very, very, very long and full life, but she was always someone who had a great impact on me because she was probably the most generous and giving person I've ever met. Everything she did was to give to others and she just meant a lot to me. And I'd like the council to adjourn in memory.
And if we didn't already do it, I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Margot Kaufman, who you may remember from the-
Oh, yes. I'd like to join her.
Yes. The, from the Times Magazine columns that kept us all giggling for many years. She finally got beat by cancer. She was a resident of Venice. So we'll put all members on that one. All right. Thank you. Call the roll. Oops, sorry. Mr. Ridley-Thomas.
Madam President, members of the council, would you join me in adjourning in memory of Harold Emerson Curl? Mr. Curl is the father, was the father of city security officer Charlotte Davis. And he is survived by his wife and several daughters, as well as several grandchildren. Additionally, Madam President, members of the council, would you join me in adjourning in memory of William Garvin Lofton? Dr. Lofton was an obstetrician who worked for Kaiser, Permanente, and Panorama City. He was involved in the plane crash in Fullerton. He's survived by his wife, daughter, sister, and mother.
All right. Call the roll. We are adjourned. See you on Friday.